Good evening. I'm going to call the January 23rd, 2023 Regular Meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education to order. Ms. Holcar, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Edsel.
Here.
Ms. Fink.
Here.
Dr. Chambers.
Present.
Dr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Walton.
Here.
Ms. Comier.
Here.
Ms. Barris-Hyland.
Here.
Student Representative Gabe Benavides.
Here.
Mr. Mina Kuznetz here, and Ms. Laco.
Here.
Trustee Fink, can I get you to read the East Lansing Mission Statement, please?
The East Lansing Mission Statement is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, oh. Were you looking at me? Move that Board of Education approves the agenda of the January 23rd, 2023 Regular Meeting as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any corrections or amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I have an amendment. I would like to move, make an amendment to the consent agenda for B, hiring of Sterling Court 1.0 FTE High School English teacher at BA Step 10.5 effective January 24th, 2023.
Do you accept your own friendly amendment?
I do.
Any other amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda to add a board discussion section immediately following public comment. So that would then turn board discussion into Item 7, and then just move the other numbers up, so.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion to approve the agenda, trustee Lyons?
I do, yes.
Any other amendments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we will vote on the motion to approve the agenda with those two friendly amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next, we will move to approve the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move the Board of Education approves the January 9th, 2023 Regular Meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Any corrections or adjustments or questions regarding the minutes from the January 9th meeting? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We will now move on to recognition. This is you, trustee Walton, and go ahead. Thank you.
Great, I have three items for recognition today. The first is that Naomi Soa, a senior at the high school, has been named a finalist for the MHSAA Scholar-Athlete Award. This is a very prestigious award. To be eligible for the award, students must have a cumulative GPA of 3.5 out of 4, and previously have won a varsity letter in at least one sport in which the MHSAA sponsors a postseason tournament. Students also are asked to respond to a series of short essay questions, submit two letters of recommendation, and a 500-word essay on the importance of sportsmanship in educational athletics. Naomi participates in volleyball and softball, and is an outstanding example of the best of our student athletes. So congratulations to Naomi. Second is that the Dr. Martin Luther King Commission of Mid-Michigan held its annual essay contest for Greater Lansing middle and high school students. This year's theme was the quote, "Now is the time to lift our nation from the quicksand of racial injustice to the solid rock of brotherhood." Two students from East Lansing High School, Nea Long and Kennedy Duncan, were winners of the contest and received the Mark S. McDaniel and James Butler Legacy Scholarship for graduating seniors. So congratulations to both of them.
Awesome.
And then this past weekend was the MSBOA Michigan Music Conference. It was held in Grand Rapids, and we had a whole lot of people selected for honors there. So the all-state musicians were selected from approximately 2,400 auditionees. For the middle school band, Helena Connet was selected for percussion, and the honorable mention was Michael Bolding, also in percussion. For high school orchestra, Sarah Fima Beziglova and Dana Hardy both play violin. For band, Annie Walton and Peter Aline both play trumpet. For jazz band, Skylar Hamlin was selected for jazz piano, and honorable mention was Ben Cook on trombone. And then we also had, these booklets right up here, for the Young Composers Concert. And from all of Michigan, we had two students selected. One was Juniper Walker, an eight-year-old who attends Marble Elementary School. She wrote a song called "The Sleepy Polar Bear." And Johnny Danziger is a high school senior, and he conducted the wind ensemble, performing Achilles Fanfare and Almost Home. And congratulations to them, that's quite an honor. And in addition to our students, we were also well-represented by our staff. Two of our staff members have been elected to be presidents of their professional associations. So Mr. Eric Kadena, here at the high school, he's the chorus teacher. Michigan, he is now the president of the Michigan School Vocal Music Association. And Karen McAvoy was elected president of the Michigan Music Education Association. So congratulations to all of them.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing all that. That's amazing. Next, we have our student representative report. You're up. This is Gabe Benavides. Thank you, Gabe.
My name is Gabe Benavides. For those of you who do not know me, I see a lot of familiar faces in here today. But I'm student, school board liaison, and I would like to start off by holding myself accountable. My role and responsibility of this job is to let these people know what is going on inside of our school and be fully transparent. I have not done so. I've sugar-coated things and told them things that they'd like to hear, and I have been fully transparent. And I'd like to apologize. But I feel as though our community has reached a breaking point. The students in our building see as there's no clear ramifications for their actions. There have been things like going on, and nothing happens to them. I know of students who've been caught with vapes in the bathroom, and nothing happens. They just go to school, go to classes like it's a normal day. Rules are as only good as the people who enforce them. We can have rules, but what do they do when nothing happens if you break them? I have a five-year-old sister. If she takes candy out of the kitchen cabinet while my parents tell her to not to do so, what happens when my parents lick her toe? That's okay. She'll continue to do so. And that's what's going on inside of our school. About a week before winter break, there was a fight inside our school with, with about 10 or so people. They were suspended for about a week, and last Friday, the same people fought outside of our school after the basketball game, and one of them had a gun. The person with the gun does not attend East Lansing High School, but they used to, and they were moved to online school because of disciplinary action. I want to know why this person was at a high school basketball game when we knew they were not responsible enough to be at school. How did they possess this firearm, and what are we doing to make sure this does not happen again? I walked in this building, there's a basketball game here tonight, I walked in this building, and there was no, nothing. I could have anything on me, anyone in this room could have anything on them. I just walked in, strolled in. A week ago, someone had a firearm. I went to every basketball game, they have wands, metal detectors, and I felt safer because I knew the likelihood that there was a firearm in that building was close to zero. It would have been found, and it would have been handled. That is very upsetting to me and the community. I also would like to know, and my peers, teachers, and parents would like to know, what happened to this kid who had a firearm? We know who it is, I won't say their name, but we know who it is, and what were the ramifications of this action, his actions? Is he just out in the world, leading a normal life, day-to-day, like nothing happened to him? This is, ties back to what I'm saying, rules are only as good as those that enforce them. I also have a problem with how things are being handled inside of my school. These fights are happening with the same group of people. And I've been made aware today that a group of teachers went to the school board, went to the administration, and wanted these kids to be removed from the commu, our school with things like expulsion. And they were told that they were not considered that because it was a problem of equity. And that is very upsetting to hear as an African-American male. The color of my skin should not dictate the consequences to my actions. And when I was a sophomore in high school, COVID hit, and I'm on the cross-country team. All the sports in our building were told they cannot participate. Football, basketball, everything, which football, basketball makes sense, contact sports. But there were cross-country teams and golf teams around the conference that still were able to participate. I received an email that's telling me that why I could not participate is because of equity, because African-American-dominated sports such as football and basketball could not play, so a white-dominated sport could not play. If you looked at our varsity team that year, we had, there's seven guys on varsity, four of whom were African-American, two of whom were Asian, and one was white. As a person of color, I was reminded that I participate in a white-dominated sport at a white-dominated school ran by a white-dominated school board and staff, and that is very upsetting. My safety should not be a problem of equity. It should be a problem of right and wrong. The color of my skin should not dictate the actions. It should not dictate whether I should participate in certain things. As an African-American, it seems as though the school board pulls out the equity card when dealing with tough decisions because they are scared of being called racist, and that is very upsetting to hear. We need to have these conversations with an open mind and be willing to be wrong in some certain scenarios, not just shut things down or look to the other way. After the fight on Friday night, the students who were involved were allowed to come back to school the very next day. These students were associated with someone with the firearm, and they walked in our building the very next day. That is very upsetting. There should have been something that gone on, something to stop these students from walking into our building. And if you are associated with someone with the firearm, who is not 18, who does not have a license, who is that, who knows where he got it from? I'd be very concerned what they have on them, but yet they strolled in our building. And because of that, a fight broke out. We need to change the culture here at East Lansing High School. Students need to be aware that their actions have ramifications, and this boils down to little things such as tardies. Teachers know that if you're late to class, there's very little to be done. I could wake up 30 minutes late for first hour, nothing happens to me. I could go to each and every single one of my classes late, nothing happens to me. What is stopping me from being late? There's nothing. And things like this, things need to be in place to stop these actions. And the enforcement is insinuating the bad culture here at East Lansing, and things need to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to start with an announcement for our community and prospective kindergarten families for next year. Kindergarten Information Night will be held Thursday, February 23rd at 6:00 PM at McDonald Middle School. Perspective resident and non-resident kindergarten and young five families will be introduced to district and building administrators, hear a presentation on the kindergarten and young five experiences at ELPS, have the opportunity to meet with other entities such as transportation, English learner services, food service, before and after care, and more. Follow-up kindergarten roundup events at each building will be held later this spring, and please see our website for more information about kindergarten information night. I'd also like to read some comments and share some comments about the past few days from my perspective here in East Lansing Public Schools. and members of our community. First, thank you for attending tonight's meeting, whether you are here in person or observing virtually. I will take staff and community interest in challenging situations over disengagement any day, even when it's hard and uncomfortable, and I appreciate this level of engagement in our district. I'd like to share some reflections and insights regarding our last week in ELPS. I want to be as transparent as possible while adhering to the confidentiality requirements by law and to not interfere with any ongoing investigations. Last week was a tough week. We started, even though it was a short week, Wednesday, we had to close McDonald Middle School and unexpectedly send students home early due to the actions of a student that set off a fire alarm and triggered a bathroom sprinkler that flooded our hallway and portions of some classrooms. In order to repair the sprinkler head and reset the fire suppression system before students could occupy the building again, that was expected to take a few hours. This was the second time this school year that MMS students were released early, the prior time due to a local power outage. Thursday evening, following a boys' basketball triple header which concluded after five overtimes, two groups of East Lansing High School students engaged in a fight in our parking lot. Two school staff members were the first on-site to intervene. One staff member reported a firearm falling out of a student's belongings as he gathered his coat and backpack. East Lansing Police Department was also on-site that evening. They took a report and opened an investigation. School staff spent the next couple hours reviewing video footage and student-recorded videos of the fight to identify students. We left the school around 11:30 with some students identified and a need for further investigation. The identity of the student reported to possess the firearm was determined, and this information was provided to East Lansing Police Department and subsequently to Meridian Township Police Department. This investigation is ongoing. We did, however, know that the student does not attend East Lansing High School in person, and we had no knowledge of any weapon threat to any individuals or to the school. With the information we had, I made the decision to have school open Friday. Immediately Friday morning, high school administrators and support personnel pulled students from class who were engaged in or strongly connected to Thursday night's fight and put them in supervised spaces, with several staff members supervising the locker commons area during passing time between first and second hours. Two students being guided to the office by an administrator went after a group of students sitting on the ledge outside the media center. School staff intervened and broke it up. Once students were removed from the, from school, high school administrators were able to move forward with their investigation and communication. After school Friday, a debriefing meeting was offered to high school staff. Many staff attended and provided feedback and shared concerns. It is clear from that meeting and in hindsight that timely communication should have gone to high school staff members and families late Thursday night so that folks were informed of the events of Thursday evening and plans for Friday. We should have at least provided staff with the information we had at the time, even if it was incomplete. We will do better in our communication with all of you. In addition, we should have ensured that the families of students engaged in Thursday night's fight were notified and that those students did not come to school Friday. Regardless of how late it was, those families should have been called, and those students should not have been in school Friday. In retrospect, we should have handled communication with staff and student removal from school differently. I acknowledge that and apologize to all of you. We can and will do better. We heard many ideas and suggestions from high school staff members Friday and have a meeting scheduled to discuss timely action on some of those suggestions. We appreciate your candidness and willingness to support some changes moving forward. When I started in this building eight years ago, we had two security guards on-site contracted through DK Security and a school resource officer for the district who shared time across buildings and was based at East Lansing Police Department offices. We repurposed those funds to provide personnel who could help monitor hallways and support students and families. We now have two full-time student advocates, two full-time hall monitors, and one full-time communities and school staff person. Two of these five individuals were previously security guards for DK Security and worked in our school. Post-COVID, I recognize that times are different, and we are dealing with a higher frequency and intensity of student dysregulation, and added a counselor and social worker to the high school as well. We will evaluate our utilization of these resources and consider whether additional support personnel are needed. High school administrators, staff and support staff are continuing to problem-solve this ongoing conflict between these two groups of students. Working under board policy, the East Lansing High School Student Handbook and Michigan Law, they have implemented consequences and support for each student. Some students have enrolled in our online program, suspensions have been assigned, after-school privileges have been taken away, while we work with the students to identify the root of this conflict and work with families and other resources to prevent future fights. With each altercation, high school administrators consider the mandatory seven factors when assigning consequences, which is why consequences may not be the same for every student involved. We are committed to making changes to improve school safety. In December, we had a, we had safety assessments completed at each of our eight buildings and just received the reports and recommendations last week. We will thoughtfully consider and evaluate current practices as well as the recommendations from our reports and from our staff members to make some meaningful changes. We will keep staff, students, families, and the board in the loop regarding these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Laco. We will move on now to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the two items on the consent agenda?
I move the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the following items. Item A, authorized.
Oh, right. Why don't you let Liz make it?
Yep, go ahead, Liz.
I'll make it. So I move the Board of Education approve the consent agendas to include the following item. A, authorized check signers. The Board of Education authorizes the following individuals to authorize check signers. Board of Trust, one, Board of Trustee Treasurer Debbie Walton, two, Superintendent Dori Laco, and three, Director of Finance and Operations Richard Pugh. Do I do both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. And B, hiring of Sterling Court 1.0 FTE High School English teacher at BA Step 10.5 effective January 24th, 2023.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's no discussion for the consent agenda items, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes 7-0. We will now move on to the public comment portion of our board meeting. I would like to first say, before I read the pre-written statement, a couple of things. First of all, public comment is not a give-and-take. We are up here, we will listen to you. We do have board discussion to follow. We may discuss some of the things that you have said, but it is not a question-and-answer portion of the meeting. So you are allowed to step forward, make your comments, return to your seat. The second, we do have quite a stack, and I'm here all night, we're all here all night. That's not a problem, but if somebody ahead of you has said exactly what you're going to say, it would really be okay if you just said, "I agree with everything so-and-so said," and shorten that, the time. If you want to use your five minutes, that's fine. I'm just, for the sake of all of us, it would be okay to just say ditto. This is an opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. Again, based on the, the number of comments we have, the timer will go off, and I will have to cut you off mid-sentence. So please be respectful of that. If you're asked to stop speaking, please stop speaking at the end of your time so that everybody here has their five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker then may be allowed additional time. So you can wait till the very end and finish out your comments. The superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings. We may also make further comment during board discussion if you wish to stay around and hear that. So with no further ado, first up, I'm going to start with Nicole Byber, who wants to speak about school breakfasts.
Honey, I promised some people I would speak to this, so I came to do it today, and I think that actually the issue I raised, consider it as a bit of a metaphor or emblematic, but I think a lot of our engaged community members are here. So I'm thinking about what is considered acceptable. Well, apparently, from when I was in the cafeteria recently during breakfast, it's considered acceptable at a time where our oceans are choked, and more and more places are trying to ban single-use plastics, first to put quantities of prepackaged food, not only that are covered in plastic, but in an additional plastic bag, which child after child, not finishing, just throws it in the trash. When we consider what is acceptable, how is, is what's considered acceptable a positive group-oriented vision that's not only uplifted but foundational, or is it not? What are the expectations? And how is accountability a facet of meeting those expectations, or is it not? So if the expectations are to raise another generation that understands this world to be something that's disposable and without consequences, as I said, I feel like that's a bit of a metaphor for what we're talking about, the majority of you tonight. Because the consequences of not being vigilant about foundational expectations and values lead us on a pretty quick spiral towards negative consequences, right? So if there's not a positive group-oriented vision that's being uplifted, for example, we can do better than feeding our children prepackaged food and getting them used to just throwing the plastic away every single day, over and over again? Can we have a better group-oriented positive vision that we feel like we're working towards as a community together? Because if you don't, and there's not any accountability of those small choices we make every day have real consequences, if there's no accountability, well, then, then we see where we're at now with this issue of plastics, but we also see something like children who are consistently disruptive, right? They don't benefit from a lack of accountability. If we're consistently trashing this earth, we're not going to benefit from a lack of seeing the truth of that and making a change. So if there's a lack of accountability, then there's a failure to, that for us to become part of a positive community that helps uphold clear values and expectations. I don't want to see a bunch of police around. You know, it makes me very uncomfortable, but it's a shame that the failure to uphold expectations and underscore accountability has brought our community to see that as a solution. This, this is way down on the line of what we should have been aware of all along with the little things that I've here mentioned. If people are tardy over and over, that has to mean something. If there's a slap or a fight that happens, that has to mean something. It can't be just let to go to the point where it's, it's a crisis. So accountability is respectful. It's respectful to our children, to our community. I'll throw in there, it's respectful to the earth to be like, we're the ones who are instilling values in these children, the young ones that I work with at the elementary school, and our older ones that are about to take over as adults. Consequences are a measure of our values, and I loved that the student representative mentions you're undermining equity to not uphold safety. Everyone wants to feel safe, right? The idea is to expect more. That's respectful. Expect more of one another. Expect that children and young adults can understand accountability and be empowered by saying, "You are part of this positive community, and that's what you're needed for, and that's what we trust you for." You can't do it without those foundations. What's considered acceptable? What's considered acceptable? It starts early. We gotta get it right. Make much.
Thank you, Dr. Byber. Next up is Jeff Lampy, speaking on high school safety. After that will be, it's a whole group of students. Ev Holbrook, Kamala Watson, Audrey Vlejos, Isabel Gorchel. So I'm just giving you the batting order there. Mr. Lampy?
All right, this is the first time I've done this, public comments. I'm just gonna roll with it here. Good evening, my name's Jeff Lampy. I'm proud father Caleb, ELHS grad 2022. Eden junior here and Sophia eighth grade. And my wife Stephanie also is an educator at Marble Elementary. Interventionist there at Marble Elementary School. I'm blessed to teach Spanish here at the high school and fulfill a dream of working and living. We live in southeast Marble neighborhood in the same community where my kids attend school. To be able to teach in schools where my kids attend for a decade now has been such a blessing to me and I'm very grateful for it. Before I begin further, I want to also thank Superintendent Laico for everything she has done for each East Lansing staff, students and families. Not only during the pandemic, but before and now as we're moving out of it, Dory, we've seen how steadfast you've spent yourself on behalf of your students and your employees. Time after time, you exemplified what it means to put others first and take care of all of us. You radiate empathy, compassion and wisdom. And I am very thankful, I know we all are thankful, for all you do on a daily basis. We have the best students around. I mentioned earlier that is a dream, it was a dream job to get to school, in this dream to get this job in this school community. My wife and I decided we wanted our children to grow up in a richly diverse school district. And East Lansing is that place. To top it off, you can't find better educators to invest their lives on behalf of their students. I'll be brief with the reason I'm addressing you, the board, tonight. As a parent, educator and EL community member, please listen. Please listen to the leaders you put in place to nurture, educate and build world citizens. The high school needs your help. Time after time, I see our admin running around the hallways, putting out preventable fires due to the poor nature of the boundaries we've shown our students. Rather than them in the classroom helping me grow as an educator who can deliver equitable instruction, they are busy negotiating consequences with families. Just today, I went to collaborate during my lunch with my neighboring teacher, but we were compelled to leave to help break up another fight between two young ladies over TikTok video. But whatever, kids are kids and it happens everywhere. No, I mean, that's not what we should say, right? I mean, that's not what a father should say, kids are kids. There are solutions we can work towards to get bettering our situations and finding a solution and changing. I'm asking that we find a solution to our current safety issues. In the past year, we've decreased our suspension rules from 10 to five days for egregious violations, I believe. There are many school districts around that still allow superintendents to suspend up to 59 days for the same actions. We have a leader of our high school that you hired who has a background in safety. Listen to him. Our high school admin needs your help. Listen to your educators, whether it's on new phone policies, adding additional eyes and ears in the hallways. I mean, the pendulum has swung one way all the way and we need to find more balance. Kids need accountability and consequences. You know what? Consequences are one of the most loving things you can do too. All right? Because they'll provide safety and because what do we have in our school community? We don't feel safe. High-quality, equitable instruction demands safety. Our vision statement talks about affirming cultural differences and nurturing intellectual curiosity, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, effective communication. So every student graduates to become a productive member of society. We don't model consistency and consequences, demonstrate there are repercussions for non-effective communications like fights and do something now about it, then we can forget about educating all students, building world citizens so that they all are productive members of society. I didn't write it, it's on our website, but I believe it. Finally, Eden came home Friday for the first time. He's a junior here. He'd said to mom and dad, "Mom and dad, for the first time today, I didn't feel safe going here." He was around the fight that happened Friday in school. That's why I'm here tonight. We hope Sophia will have the joy to walk in through these doors next year, but this is pending board action on what's been said tonight and what will be said tonight. Please listen to our impeccable central office admin, our high school admin. I know they are ready to lead us and you, and you have all of us ready to work. Thank you.
Next up after these four will be Iris Zink.
First of all, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be heard. We've come to speak today as a group of concerned students from East Lansing High School about the recent violent events that have taken place within our school. On Thursday, January 19th, an East Lansing High School staff member saw a firearm fall out of a student's bag following the basketball game. This student was part of a large fight that also occurred that evening between two groups of ELHS students who have had an ongoing conflict throughout the school year. The next day at school, Friday, January 20th, the only precaution taken was having a police officer stationed at the school. Later that day, another fight involving the same students broke out. While those students involved were sent home afterwards, many other students were placed in harm's way due to the unpredictable nature of large fights. As students attending ELHS on an everyday basis, we feel that the manner in which the following incidents have been handled is unsatisfactory. That a firearm was sighted on school property is very concerning to us and the fact that a staff member's eyewitness account is not enough evidence to warrant extra precautions is also concerning. On another note, we question why students with frequent conflicts were allowed back at school the following morning in the aftermath of a large-scale fight without any further investigation. We feel that since these students have been involved in multiple incidents this year, the situation should not have been allowed to escalate to this degree and we are left questioning why more decisive measures have not been taken to address these actions. Furthermore, it may have been beneficial to students and staff if these students' issues were addressed prior to the incidents escalating. Bringing these students to the office to talk with them or other measures that do not involve the students missing school could have helped resolve or de-escalate the situation. Suspending these students from the school does not resolve the issue nor does it prepare students for their future.
As students, we deserve to feel safe at school. If these issues continue, we need to have better safety measures in place. For many students, including myself, a police officer at school does not make us feel any safer. There have been many incidents in which people of color, specifically black individuals, have been harmed or killed by police officers who falsely identified them because they are black as a threat. While it is important to acknowledge that this is not the case regarding all police officers, many students of color will not feel safer to have a police officer or multiple officers stationed at our school. We believe that the district should invest in additional security measures, which could include a student ID scanning system similar to those used by staff and teachers in order for students to enter the school. This would help prevent potentially dangerous outsiders from entering the school. We also think that further disciplinary measures should be used when dealing with students who repeatedly have conflicts, including alternative options to suspension.
At the heart of everything, students are all aware of the many school shootings that have taken place in the past few years. We all hear the headlines day in and day out and this gives us a reason to worry about how our school would handle these situations. Students should be focused on their education, not about whether they will make it through the school day safely. Parents should be worried about whether their student, should be worried about whether their student is getting the education they need and not about whether they will come home at the end of the day safe and sound. And of course, teachers should be concerned with making lesson plans and grading assignments and not about what they would do if a school shooting occurred at school, excuse me. If this issue is neglected for any longer, more students and staff will be at risk. Thank you for your time.
After Ms. Zink will be Del Chennault.
I'm Iris Zink. There, you'll see that I have a last name in common with one of your instructors who not only broke up the fight on Thursday night, but also broke up the fight on Friday. I do not feel safe with my daughter in this building. I didn't feel safe with my daughter Gloria was in this building. I came to the school board meeting and I was reassured that after the Oxford shooting, things would change. Things got worse, not better. Madeline told me the other night that she doesn't want to be a teacher anymore. That has been her dream for her entire life and that is because she doesn't feel safe and she cannot exert any change in this building because there are no consequences to student behavior. This is wrong. This is a Columbine accident waiting to happen. I have said that over and over again. There is no metal detectors. There are no police here. The police don't even care about coming out here because of the attitude of the school board, who doesn't give a shit, okay? I don't feel comfortable with here, my daughter being here. I have ordered her a bulletproof vest and that is not funny. She's passionate about coaching, she's passionate about teaching and she wants to exert change, but she can't in this environment. And you all are making a huge mistake. I hear you just hired another teacher. How's she gonna feel about this? How's she gonna feel about being in this building that is not safe for students? And how many people did my daughter save from getting shot on Thursday night? And yet you opened school back up. You didn't tell the teachers, you didn't tell the students and you didn't tell the families that that had happened. Has anyone asked if my daughter needs a mental health day or if she's okay? No one is doing that. No one seems to care and that is a problem.
After Mr. Chennault, I just have the first name Jennifer from Chisholm Ave.
Thank you, board members. Thank you for giving me the time to address you tonight. I wanted to bring a perspective as a parent, perspective of two students that are high school students. I have a freshman daughter and I have a senior son. And I want to bring their perspective because they were direct witnesses to some of these incidences. And what happened on Thursday night, I don't think is an isolated incident, as you know. And I think that was what probably is what brought everything to a head, as you can see from this room. My son, who's a senior, exited the basketball game and was sitting in his car getting ready to leave and he noticed, heard of folks, of people that were fighting. Couldn't leave his car, couldn't move his vehicle, felt unsafe. Looks up and sees the teacher, Mrs. Zink, I believe, who was in the middle of trying to break this up because it was her night that night, I believe, to work and be a chaperone. She was in the parking lot alone. I don't know if you know Mrs. Zink, I think all of you do. Not a, she's not an imposing figure. Looked at my son who was sitting in his car, recognized him and at that moment, asked him to come and help her. My son, who's a senior, is then put into the position of having to decide, is my personal safety sitting in his vehicle more important? Or should I come out and help this teacher who's overwhelmed with kids, literally? And he said, you could hear heads hitting on vehicle windows, fists hitting windows as kids were missing. And my son is put into a position to now have to be a security guard and help this teacher. He got out and helped her. That should not happen in this school district. My daughter comes home with videos. Freshman who just came from Marble Middle School. Not a very worldly girl. I mean, she's, you know, I think your average East Lansing girl. Comes home and explains to us that there were a fight. There were videos, showed us videos of a kid being punched unconscious. We had to explain to her that violence like that is unacceptable. It stuck with her for days. My wife and I had to decide whether or not we should get our daughter counseling because of what she's seen going on in these hallways. These are not isolated incidences. What we have is a crisis of common sense. This room is a flashing red sign. Your teachers are screaming at you every day and I know this is not new. This was an issue last year. I was a witness to teachers coming in and asking you for help last year. And what we get is more PhD-level analyses. What we get is more, let's bring in more consultants. What we need is safety and what we need is these kids to feel like they can come to school, learn and be safe. It's not asking a lot. That's your mission as a school board. Not to coddle the bad actors, but to ensure that every kid that comes to school wants to be a learner and be a positive member of this school community and be a positive adult and be a global citizen can achieve that goal. But what's happening in this school is preventing that from happening. It's now your job to step up, stop the crisis of common sense, do what needs to be done today. No more excuses. I don't want to have to explain to my kids any longer why fights of this magnitude, this violence are happening every day. And I sure as hell don't want to ask her to my kid when a shooting or something worse happens in this school district because we're heading down that path. Now is the time to act and we're gonna be watching. Stop the crisis of common sense. Thank you.
After Jennifer is Carrie Keaton and then Kevin Mays.
Hi, these stories got me a little shaky. I just want to say when gun violence hits close to home, you take every threat seriously. So I've been compelled to come speak out. I was made aware prior to winter break that our students were letting in kids who did not attend our schools during school hours. I can tell you, I as well as my daughter was very concerned. She brought it to people's concerns and it was kind of just brushed off, I think. As far as I'm aware, this has been an ongoing situation since last year, all the way up to expulsion. My opinion is students who cannot conduct themselves among their peers need to be, need to not be in school. If not expelling them, look into online options, but they don't need to be among the rest of the students. Last, my daughter has missed more than one day of school out of fear of gun violence and her safety. There are clear aggressors and those responding out of necessity. This isn't just about boys being boys. One of these boys pulled my daughter into the drama. Mind you, she's no angel. But indicating that he would, and pardon my French, said it to one of the other boys that he would fuck his bitch in front of him, referring to my daughter. One, my daughter's not a bitch. Two, students who are not directly involved seriously need to be considered and how disruptive these students' actions are for the learning environments for kids that have nothing to do with this. It's ridiculous. And three, regarding the comment that was made about my daughter, I'm just here to show her that she matters and we defend and value our girls as she's not a bitch.
Carrie Keaton?
Can't quite hear out there.
Carrie Keaton's first. Go back. Carrie Keaton? Carrie Keaton? Okay. After Kevin Mays is Mary Fatah and then Chris Carnegie.
How we doing, folks? Carrie Keaton from Lansing. Thirty-one years. Doing what many of you. Damn, this is, this might as well be at home. So I work at Lansing Everett. So what y'all doing right now? Stories I could tell you, you know? It's bothering you, I understand, I mean, I get it. Trust me, I get it, but my kids, I mean, that's an everyday thing for us, so. I would just like to say that my, I have two daughters that go, well, one went here, graduated last year. Four-point plus, I'm gonna get that in there too. And my baby's a freshman. But they, we sent them here, well, to East Lansing for numerous reasons. One, Lansing cut music, athletics and art. So my girls like that. So we chose to move them, actually got into Red Cedar, which was a really great school. But for the educational environment, not the education. We got great teachers at EV and at Eastern where I went, Sexton. Great educators, but the environment for me is not healthy. Unfortunately, and as being a coach here for the last five years, I've noticed that change. It's like, okay, this is not why I sent my children out here. It's like, okay, this is, this is not why I sent my children out here. I think it's, and I think the young lady spoken about not having a police officer or a security guards. Hey, I don't care what color you are. You could feel some type of way, whatever you want to. This school needs to have at least two security officers. And I, I would be, I don't know if I'd be reluctant, but might need a resource officer back as well. They took ours away, and, you know, we have, I think somebody asked me, I think we have at least five, if not six, at Everett. You know, we, we have fights every day. I mean, it is what it is, you know? And myself, I, I choose not to engage because I'm not, I'm too old. I'm not gonna get popped in the back of my head just because somebody trying to get one in. When I've seen that, not gonna do that. Like I said, thirty-one years. It might be time for me to find something else to do. Because some days, I don't feel safe. And when Coach Lampy, or the gentleman spoke, talked about the, the young lady that was not very imposing, well, there's not too many more imposing people walking in my school. And if I don't feel safe, you know, I told my daughter, listen, when it gets quiet, you need to start paying attention. When the noise gets a little bit louder than the normal noise you hear, you better start paying attention. And when you hear it, you need to go the other way. So, I mean, I trained her, she understands. But sometimes you get, like the young man got caught in the car. Where you gonna go? You're stuck. And then you see the, you know, the gun, that kind of thing, so... I brought my children here, like I said, for a better environment. I think that's changed. I don't think changes have been made accordingly to offset that. And also, teachers, you need to demand of the school board or whoever. But if the students are doing things, I have no problem kicking them all out. That's what online school is for. If you don't want to do the things that need to be, that to make you available to be here, then you don't need to be here. Kids are here to learn, twelve hundred of them. You shouldn't have, like you said, you should, but you shouldn't have to worry about, you know, that's, that's 2023. You gotta get past that, because that's here. And to say that there wasn't a, that gun was outside, to say there hasn't been a gun in the school this year, you're fooling yourself. Trust me. So, I, I, that's what I would say, you know? I got three, my daughter got three years. I don't know how much longer I can coach anyway, but as long as Coach Franco let me stay, I'll stay. But if, I, I just really think that needs to be looked at. At least two. You got Coach G, you got Jared, you got Coach Bob. You got people here that are willing to help, but, and that, you know, that resource officer give you the boom-boom, and now you got people here right now, but... I'll go back and I'm gonna leave it at this. You don't have to worry. And, and trust, I mean, I have lots of police officer friends, but I'm not gonna sit here and say that, you know, you know, ramp up for cops and all that either. I mean, I've had my own issues. Oh, that's the time. Okay. But please, just take that under consideration. Teachers, you gotta stand up for yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Keaton.
Nobody else will.
Kevin Mays?
We can't quite hear out there. Good evening. My name is Kevin Mays. Teacher at East Lansing High School, computer science, basketball coach. Here to talk to you guys tonight about reoccurring violence at East Lansing High School. I'm gonna make suggestions and hopefully make a difference. We have a group of students that flat-out are violent, and our response to their violence isn't working. Our policies do not support our educators, who are trying to create a healthy learning environment for the students, who are worried they're going to be targeted or worried about their friends. My seventeen-year-old is an example. Why do I have to talk to my seventeen-year-old in tears? Because he's worried about his friends at school. There's no scenario where that should happen. By, by all defenders, simply serve their one-to-five-day suspensions, that used to be five to ten, but administrators no longer have that option. They don't have a lot in their toolbox. It's now down to one to five, and there's not much else that we're able to do with that. They simply serve their suspension, come back, engage in another attack, and it repeats until eventually you pass them on to grad alliance. They return the next fall, and the violence starts over again. We have lots of examples recently of what I would consider a definition of violence. This isn't some homegrown, organic fight between two high school boys or girls that got heated. You have a group of individuals that are targeting attacks against smaller groups. Stomping somebody at a football game, a large brawl in the commons. You have these situations where it's targeted, it's predatory. You have students that let somebody in a side door and went to the bathroom and were waiting for somebody and trying to lure them into the bathroom to jump them. All right, this is not some stupid macho thing where you have a person and a person who are going at it. It's very intentional, and it's organized. Honestly, as we go through this, we're very fortunate. Nothing happened in that situation. And board members, you should be forced to watch all the videos that we are in as teachers. Because you have to understand what exactly that does to you as a teacher. You love all of these kids, regardless of where they're at, and you're having to step in between them when all of these things are happening. We have a violence problem in East Lansing High School. If we continue forward without changing the direction, we are going to lose. What are we gonna lose? You're gonna lose your talented APs here at the high school. You have two fine young women who are doing a great job, who are not gonna stay around and deal with this if they're not supported. And you're not gonna be able to replace them with the same quality of assistant principal that you guys have here. You may be the athletic director if you don't start providing police support at all basketball and football games. She needs your support. You will lose teachers. Man, I love my job. I absolutely love teaching. And my heart breaks for the five, five-hundred-and-twenty-pound, five-hundred-and-twenty-pound female, I'm not outing someone's weight, my wife would kill me, staff, who has been in a ton of these fight videos, sticking her head out there, and on Thursday night saw a gun fall out of somebody's possession in front of her. And this is a possession I love, a profession I love, and I want her to stay in it. Because she's wildly popular, she's a great coach, she does a great job. And the way things are right now, I don't want her to go anywhere. And I hope she doesn't, but I would understand if she did. When it comes to the rest of your staff, they're in the point where they're gonna have to defend themselves. You have a teacher on Friday morning, or someone who's not a teacher, but in a different position, who had a student look at them and said so-and-so, "Let's go," and ended up with a student's hands around his neck. The difference is, he's my size but fit. Doesn't look like this. All right, he's able to take care of himself in that situation. We are not able to do that. You're gonna lose students. There are five students that are targeted by this group of students. Those five students are looking elsewhere because this is not safe. All five of them are black. All five of them came to East Lansing whining an excellent education, and now they're not safe at school. They're not attending school every single day. I reflect at what we're doing at East Lansing High School, and we are failing. I need the board and the leadership. I voted for you guys. I'll put you in these seats. I need you guys to step up. I need you guys to watch these videos. I need you to support the staff, support the students, support your administration. We need to be in a situation where we have these police officers at these basketball games and in parking lot post games. Students that go to grad alliance should not be allowed to come back that next fall if they've left for violent reasons, unless we have some sort of counseling that they need. They need counseling. All right, I don't want kids expelled with no reason, but that's our bucket, is suspension or expulsion. Where's the mandatory counseling or things that we can do to try to help them deal with this? To go out and come back and be in the exact same situation, you're gonna get the same kind of a response. Established violent behavior should lead to expulsion. Training of student advocates and hall monitors and additional hall monitors.
Set his timer.
Trust your administration. When they bring a student to you for expulsion...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
It's warranted. Dory, I appreciate your comments tonight. Very much so. It's your fault I choked up. Thursday night after the game, I'm almost done. I ran out in the parking lot, stepped in between a fight, one kid here and five here. Five kids that got into a car because I made them. And I turned my back on the one student who I found out the next day had a gun! That's how my night ended. And I didn't find out about it till Friday, and most of your staff didn't know about it. And I thank you for apologizing about that, and I greatly appreciate you revisiting policies that help with communication. We're better than this. Thank you.
Mary Fatah, followed by Chris Carnegie, and then Elaine Wallace.
First of all, I want to say that I have nothing prepared like other people did. But I, I do have a front row seat to what happens at school. And, you know, with these, I appreciate you guys listening to us. First of all, I want to say thank you for, for opening your eyes to, to the issues that are happening, but... So Friday, I'll take Friday for an example of one of the many fights that have happened. We had one administrator out, she was in the hospital. One hall monitor was sick. So we're down two people, okay? So when this fight breaks out, the kids are piling into our office. Administrators are tackling kids on the floor in our office. We have no help. We didn't have time to call 911. I don't have time to sit and get on the phone. Didn't even have my phone with me. It was so chaotic. Okay? This is what happens when things break out. I wish I had had someone there, like a school resource officer, that could have gotten on his radio and said, "We need help." I don't have time to get on the phone, and they say, "911, what's your emergency?" I don't have time to do that, okay? And what you guys need to realize is when things happen, they happen really fast. Okay? And we have no tools. We have had no active shooter training. The buzzer at the door is a joke. We have so many points of entry at this school. We can't keep our eighteen-hundred beautiful kids safe. There's no way. Without extra help, a school resource officer who can get on the, on his radio and call. And you know, it's not just for fights. We had a student who had a first-time grand mal seizure in the weight room. If we'd had a school resource officer, emergency would have been here a hundred times faster than they were. And that kid was blue when he went out that door. Okay? Scary stuff. Super scary from where we're sitting. So I'm just saying, you know, on behalf of the secretaries, I don't want to work in a hostile work environment, I really don't. My kids went through here. I grew up here. I live a hundred yards from this building. And for there to be a gun so close to my house, number one, a gun in this building where we have all these beautiful kids, they have a right to learn. They have a right to be here and be safe. I have a right to be here and be safe. Okay? So I wasn't gonna talk tonight because, you know, I don't know if it's gonna do any good. Because I have been down, and I have told people in the board office, this is a really unsafe building. More than once. Nobody listens. I don't have a buzzer behind my desk, or under my desk. If an active shooter comes up to where I'm sitting, I'm gonna have to say, you know, just hold on one second. Hold on that thought, I gotta run behind here. You know? Twenty feet away and hit a button. Okay? It is just not safe. It's not safe for your, for me, it's not safe for anybody. And I don't know, I hope, I pray your eyes are open tonight and take politics and race out of it. Because if there's an active shooter, I don't care what they are. My job is to keep these kids safe, and I have no tools. I have none. So, I hope you listen, and I hope things change.
Chris Carnegie? Elaine Wallace? Followed by Gary Holbrook, and then Adam Orange.
Hi, my name's Elena Wallace. I've had two of my kids graduate from here already. A one-step child, two from 2012, one from 2014. This school has been going downhill ever since. Every single day, I get text messages from my daughter, who's a senior here, about kids letting other kids into the building, kids going out into the woods vaping, her walking into a bathroom and it smells nothing like marijuana. I get texts that she can't go down a hallway because there's huge fights. She's gotta turn around and go the opposite way. I pull up here Friday morning to bring my daughter because I take and pick her up every single day. I schedule my workday around her. I get here, there's a cop here. I have no idea, I ask her, she has no idea. She has no idea what's going on. She was working Thursday night until late, she had no idea. Had I known what had happened, my child would not have stepped foot into the school on Friday. She probably wouldn't have been here Monday. Not until I knew that something was going to happen to get these things under control. These fights have been going on since she was a freshman. This group of students, it's been since last year. It's now going over. And they're here the very next day, as other people have stated, they're here. No consequences at all. I don't know when the whole suspension thing changed and went down, but I don't understand why. I don't understand why there aren't hall monitors. There used to be. There used to be cops in the school. There aren't now. I know there was a lawsuit, and that kind of probably played into some consideration of having officers in the school. They need to be in here. I don't care what color you are, I don't care what size, I don't care what race or what you identify as. We need police officers in this school. Now, today, it should have been Friday. There shouldn't have been school on Friday. And for a parent to feel that I had no idea what was going on, I was letting my child come to school, half of her classes were empty, she had no idea what was going on until someone who stayed home, who knew about the incident, text her and said, "What are you doing at school?" This happened Thursday night, there was a gun. And there's so many different stories flying through our children of what actually happened, that they don't even know what to believe, what happened, what occurred. She's come home with ten different stories of what happened Thursday and Friday. I should not have to worry about my child when I bring her to school. I know the state of Michigan has resources for public schools. I work for the state of Michigan. I know there are resources and funds available to provide safety and mental health for our children. And I don't see much being done. This stuff started last year with a fighting with this group of kids, with the other group of kids. Then it involved athletic kids, starting things with them, and back and forth, back and forth. And nothing has been done. My daughter will graduate this year. And I thank God that I don't have any more children coming to the East Lansing School District. I've kept all five of our kids in East Lansing, she's the last one. And there was a reason. It was better. It was better than Lansing, it was better than Okemos, it was better than Hazlet. We were up there ranked better than any other school. Now we are not. At Okemos, they have hall monitors. They have someone walking kids from the bathroom to classes. They're taking vaping, you're suspended. My fiance worked at Everett, so I knew what Coach Keaton was talking about. He would tell me daily things of what was going on. I don't want to see East Lansing like that, but you guys are like steps, steps, year late on doing anything that happens in the school. I want my daughter to finish here, I really do. I want her to graduate from East Lansing. But if something's not done immediately, like put into place, communication, some sort of consequences on these students who are causing problems every single day, she will not finish her year out here. I will move her. I will move her to Okemos where they have hall monitors. They have consequences, they have people who are being held accountable for their actions. And staff members, you, you can, or, like, Ms. Leiko, you're, you were upset, you didn't communicate with the parents. How do you think we felt? Knowing that I was gonna bring my daughter into school, not knowing anything that was going on, and then her texting me, calling me, all upset and crying. Something needs to be done, like last year.
Thank you for your comments. Simply because this statement has been made many times, I do feel I need to make a correction. A five-day suspension is not the limit to suspension. The suspensions are stepwise as to who handles the suspension. Whether it's held within the district, goes to the superintendent, or comes to the board is based on the length of the suspension. Students can be suspended for more than five days. We have only heard this year one student whose suspension exceeded the ten-day limit that has to come to the board. So, that... So that, I just wanted to clarify that there is no, they can only be suspended five days and then they can't come back in, because that is a fallacy that I feel needed to be corrected.
... tonight. I'm a parent of two East Lansing public school students. I would like to thank Principal Mayfield for joining the high school team this year. I would like to thank Superintendent Laco for her leadership. Despite what's happened, I have great faith in you. I would like to extend my thanks to our Board of Volunteers. You've taken responsibility for overseeing a public school, and that's a great responsibility. I would like to thank parent Ludi Jones for sharing her concerns with the board two weeks ago at the same podium. And here we are again. I would like to thank the parents that are here today to support their students. I would like to thank Mr. Benavides for his moving comments. I would like to thank so many students for joining us this evening as well. Members of the board, I commend your desire to advocate for the education of students from East Lansing and the surrounding areas. I hope your legacy will reflect your strong commitment to public education. My high school student reports school fights to me regularly throughout the year. Usually it's with a tone of resignation, with a little fear mixed in. As Principal Mayfield alluded to in his communications last Thursday, they also report that the perpetrators are the same group of students. I've not yet reviewed video from all the board meetings from last year, but I do not believe Ms. Jones' warning to the board two weeks ago was the first you've heard. I believe the board has been apprised of this crisis, and I must question then, why has the board not done more to stop the violence? I appreciate that Ms. Jones and members of the student body, Mr. Mays, have come with solutions to the problem, but solving the lack of safety in our high school is not the responsibility of Ms. Jones, other parents, students. That ultimate responsibility lies with the Board of Education. Evidence this week suggests that not only is the board not solving this problem, it's Members of the board, both you and the public, all of us together, want your legacy to be one of achievement. We want your legacy to be focused on education and the wonderful things you've done for this school. We want you to be remembered for closing the education gap between students. We want you to be honored for your commitment to fair and just policies. But education cannot happen in the absence of security. Those goals will not happen until our students are safe. If the escalation of the violence at the high school continues, your legacy will be one of shame, one in which you willingly, knowingly disregarded student safety. The board must commit to resolving this crisis. The board must commit to keeping the public apprised of the steps it is taking to ensure the safety of its students. Members of the board, you have three choices before you. You can square your shoulders, grit your teeth, and commit to solving this crisis. You can abdicate your position to make way for somebody who has the tenacity to solve it in your place, or you can wait for the voters to move a board that will solve the problem. That could take a very long time, and after the last week, I don't think we have that much time. I'll leave it to you to consider how you want your legacy to play out. Thank you.
Adam Orange, followed by Mark Pontoni.
I have the great pleasure of actually coming quite frequently to the board. Many of you are professional friends, personal friends, alliances connected through the university, through parent groups, and I hold a lot of respect for the positions to which you were elected. I appreciate your communication this evening, Dory. And generally, I'm here to share happy news about our world language, adventures abroad, our students who are excelling academically, and I'm not happy tonight. And it seems strange that we were asked in very little time to offer robust online instruction, yet we cannot accommodate in four days the 30 people standing outside to find a larger room. You extend an olive branch of communication. That means you also extend a larger room to people to be a part of the solutions that you are seeking. It is shameful. It is embarrassing, and that is one step that you could have remedied very easily over the last 72 hours. I'm also very thankful for the students here this evening, many of which who I've had the pleasure of teaching. And remember, guys, when I tell you all the time that I love you? It's because I seriously have a bursting of joy from my heart, teaching you, being with you, and keeping you safe. A couple of years ago, Dory and Glenn and Nick, you came around and you offered us five minutes. I was happy for five minutes. It was a wonderful opportunity to talk about the situation under which we were teaching, the relationships that we were trying to repair, the suggestions that we had. I was hopeful as a new employee. I am less hopeful this evening. And I have the awesome opportunity to be at McDonald Middle School, seeing our school district through two different lenses, and it pains me to tell you that we are not only sowing the seeds of violence at East Lansing High School, but those seeds have already been planted at McDonald Middle School as well. And if we are not willing to address that, parallel to the conversations we have at the high school, I'm certainly very, very worried for myself and my colleagues, who are outnumbering our days of joy with days of misery. I'm tired. I'm exhausted. I'm overextended. And if it weren't for the people that I see sitting that I work with, whom I love and I know who support and who love me, I'm not quite sure I would want to be here every day. You have an awesome responsibility, and I will be thoroughly disappointed in you collectively and individually if you don't rise to the occasion. Thank you.
I suppose you might be assuming that as the East Lansing Education Association Vice President, that I'm going to stand up here and rip our administration over the events of the past several days. But that would be a faulty assumption. Mr. Mayfield, Ms. Schwartzbeck, Ms. Davis are doing what they can with the resources made available to them to try to keep our building safe. The failures over the past couple of days, weeks, and months in achieving the level of safety all of us deserve are not because of a lack of efforts from them. The failures in providing a safe environment for teaching and learning originate in this room. When policies and decisions by this board remove a wide range of disciplinary options from our administrators' hands, creating and maintaining a safe environment is nearly impossible. Board policy has essentially exempted all students from serious consequences of any kind. Students openly talk about it, right in front of us, that there are no real consequences for bad behavior. They know it, and we know it. The logical extension of knowing that creates an open season on doing just whatever the hell you want, whenever you want to do it. Fights, brawls, breaking and entering fights, more fights, insubordination, disrespect, and more fights are occurring with regularity and have become acceptable behaviors in this district. And now a gun. A student who allegedly had the gun at the basketball game on Thursday had already been moved to Graduation Alliance because of his past transgressions. So why was he allowed on campus? Now that he has brought a gun on this campus, will this board comply with state law and expel him? Michigan Law 380.1311 gives boards very little leeway and requires that any student bringing a gun to campus must be expelled. There are a couple of exceptions, but clearly none of them apply here. The other students involved in the fight on Thursday were allowed to attend school on Friday. On this matter, I do fault our administration. There's absolutely no excuse for allowing students back on campus till a complete investigation of the previous night's activities can be conducted. There was a gun on campus. Undoubtedly, our administration hesitated to do the right thing because they had no reason whatsoever to believe that board policy supports them. Whatever grievances those students were trying to resolve by brawling on Thursday were clearly not resolved, and sure enough, another fight broke out between first and second hour. Every single person in this building was put at risk because those students were allowed back in the building before an investigation of Thursday night incidents can be conducted. And I appreciate very much, Dory, your acknowledgement of that earlier. We are not in any way asking the board to return to the days of suspensions and expulsions which were not equitably and fairly administered. No one wants that. Let's look, however, at the results of the current policy and not just its intent. As our district's social justice guidelines clearly state, be aware that intent does not equal impact. It's time to recognize, as all of us on the ground have, that the impact of handcuffing our administration is that we have sacrificed a safe teaching and learning environment simply to preserve our good intentions. It appears we are so afraid that our own best judgment will reveal a bias in our disciplinary outcomes, that we have ceded the responsibility of maintaining a safe environment to a strategy of negotiation with children instead of simple rule enforcement with checks and balances to eliminate bias. The incidents over the past few days are just a small slice of how things go at the high school. For most teachers, enough is enough. We have compiled a list of changes we'd like to see implemented as soon as possible. These include expulsion of students who bring firearms on the school property as required by state law, increased professional presence in the halls with the authority to issue tangible, real consequences for students in violation of school rules, a board policy implementing a cell phone ban with tangible, real consequences for noncompliance. Phones are regularly used during the school day to coordinate a wide range of illegal and dangerous activities. In addition, research and anecdotal evidence is overwhelming and clear that phones distract from learning and degrade student mental health, socialization, and discourse. We want the return of random locker checks. We want no backpacks in the classrooms. We want a reduction of points of entrance to the building for students and tangible, real consequences for students who prop doors and/or let students into the building through illegal entrances. We have security cameras, let's use them. Mandatory wearing of ID badges for staff and students with tangible, real consequences for noncompliance. Allow administration more tools besides restorative justice for repeated offenders. While, I have two sentences. While a list of eight things may seem like a lot of change, most of them will be simple to implement. Will they be simple to enforce? Only if board policy allows administrations to hold students accountable. In the absence of that, we're all just waiting around for the next tragedy. Thank you.
Next is Ross Gorman, followed by Madeline Zink and Graham Figna.
Thank you. Tim Akers, I'm an English teacher at the high school, my 17th year. In my first 20 or so years of public education, I wrote a grand total of two disciplinary referrals. The first, when a student attacked me with a fork, that's a story in and of itself. The second, when a student leapt on my back, scratching my face and breaking my glasses. I tell you this because I want to make it clear that I'm not the type of teacher who expects a student to be expelled for rolling their eyes at me. That said, the degree of permissiveness our district demonstrates with regard to student discipline has become completely untenable. In all fairness, there's no one person responsible for our current atmosphere. This is a culture that has developed over time. However, little is being done to prevent its perpetuation. From attendance issues to cell phones to outright violence, poor student behavior has gained a momentum of its own, gradually developing from poor choices to dangerous choices. The incident from last week, as serious as it is, is just another symptom of a deeper issue. The safety measures currently in place are roughly the equivalent of the TSA taking our shampoo at the airport to make us feel safe from terrorist attacks. The district's actions have been performative at best. When we bring disciplinary issues to the administration, we're told to either improve our relationships with students or enter the incident into Swiss. In both cases, the responsibility, if not outright blame, is often shifted to the teacher. While I don't want to turn this into a litany of specific incidents, I think it's important to provide some context. Case in point, when we still had the mask mandate in place, I was in a hall during passing and asked two young ladies to put their masks back on, something I was doing roughly 50 times a day at the time. Their response was to call me everything but a child of God. As their behavior was completely inappropriate, I took them to the office, passed them off to an administrator with a brief explanation, and headed back to class. At the end of the day, I was called to the office, at which time administration suggested that I had somehow overreacted and suggested that I engage the students in restorative justice. If the mere enforcement of school policies requires teachers to justify themselves, how can we be expected to take supposed rules seriously? While a relatively innocuous example, this is on the far end of the spectrum of permissiveness that establishes in the minds of students that there are no real consequences, leading them to push the envelope. For instance, the district has exhibited the same lax attitude towards cell phone use. Beyond the impact that the rampant use of cell phones has had on student achievement and mental health, students use their phones for far more insidious purposes. Before winter break, we had an incident wherein a student burst into a teacher's classroom and physically assaulted another student over a TikTok video. Behind her, she was followed by a small entourage who had their phones at the ready to record the incident. Students regularly text their friends from outside of locked doors and have them leave class and let them in, avoiding the monitored doors at the front of the building. This practice is clearly a risk, as a few weeks ago, some of our students opened locked doors for some kids who were not our students so they could come in and initiate a confrontation. Even worse was the incident last year wherein a student punched a teacher in the face, an incident which could have easily been repeated this week with Maddie. High school administrators originally suspended the students involved for eight days, which in and of itself is ridiculous, only to be overruled and have the suspension reduced to four days for a physical assault that should have been reported to the police. The argument that the student did it accidentally as he intended to punch the other student and not the teacher does not hold water. If I fire a gun with the intent to kill, miss my target, and kill an innocent bystander, I'm still guilty of murder. The student intended to cause bodily harm. The fact that he missed his intended target is irrelevant. Section 380 of the Michigan School Code reads as follows. If a pupil enrolled in grade six or above commits a physical assault at school against a person employed by or engaged as a volunteer or contractor by the school board, and the physical assault is reported to the school board, school district superintendent, or building principal by the victim, if the victim is unable to report the assault by another person on the victim's behalf, then the school board or the designee of the school board, as described in section 1311, on behalf of the school board, shall expel the pupil from the school district permanently. Shall expel, not may, not suspend for eight days, not suspend for four days. When our union approached the superintendent about this issue and asked that she come and meet with the teachers, we were told that her response was that she was not going to meet with an angry mob. These are not the words that instill confidence in a teaching staff. Again, the point of these examples is to make clear that we are no longer dealing with hypotheticals. We have serious safety issues here that go far beyond two groups of specific students. We can enter Swiss reports and build relationships all the live long day, but until we realize that actual discipline is necessary, the situation will progressively worsen. High school is as much about socialization as it is education. Our students need to realize that certain behaviors are unacceptable once they cross the threshold of our building. It's right in our mission statement, building world citizens. Citizens are part of a larger community, and for a community to function, its members have to work in concert for the good of all. Thank you.
This isn't coming out of my timer, right? I'm just setting up the timer, hopefully. There's two pages. Can you hear me? All right. Superintendent Laco, School Board, East Lansing Community. My name is Ross Gorman, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the ELEA to express no confidence in the board's current policies regarding school safety and discipline, and to put forward suggestions for a return to a safe learning environment for our students and staff at this high school. I am sorry to have to speak today. I love teaching world history at this high school. I am also humbled to teach our law class and our Black History elective. I have been proactive in promoting our diverse classrooms because I see the merits every day. It is the promotion of a diverse learning environment that drew me to East Lansing. So I want to share with you all something that happened this Friday, this last Friday, in my
this last Friday, in my classroom. You see, I have a new student this last week. On the enter my class in the middle of a confusing and boisterous lesson at a new school, knowing nobody in class, and took it in stride. To boot, their work was insightful and detailed because my new student appears to be quite sharp. Still, as any new student reserves the right to be, they looked a little apprehensive and a little nervous. Perhaps it was the violence in the halls or just typical first day nerves. I don't know. I teach my world history students about the Bahit al-Hikma. Forgive my Arabic. This is the House of Wisdom. It's one of the greatest libraries in world history. In the year 1000, scholars from around the world traveled to study and learn in diverse harmony there. By all accounts, that place was kicking. Anyone was welcome to contribute their diverse perspective to learning. They gave us algebra, the number zero, commentary on Greek philosophy, even algorithms and robotics in the year 1000. I feel as though we are stewards of that library's legacy right here in this building, a diverse community of learners. My students also learn about Cordoba, a city of learning in Europe during the same time period. This city, which had the best schools in Europe, was ruled by Arab Muslims, was one-third Jewish, and drew all of Europe's Christian scholars to join them. It was the Dark Ages, but Cordoba had diversity and inclusion figured out in the year 1000. We have it here. I know this is true because on Friday in my classroom, a very kind and outgoing student that I have in the same class struck up a conversation with my new student and asked about their unique handwriting. I overheard the conversation and I realized that this new student's handwriting had some pretty distinct vertical lines, which I noticed changed about my own handwriting when I learned the Arabic alphabet, which I learned for our students here from handwritten workbooks written by our kids in composition books so that I could practice my Arabic. They were a gift. They're in my room if you want to see them. So I pointed this out. And it just so happens that she's... I asked if she spoke any other languages, that she wrote in another language. She said, yes, I speak Swahili. I know English in my two tribal languages. And it just so happened that in my history class, we study Swahili. We learn African history by doing linguistic history and dissecting that language specifically to learn about Bantu and how Swahili picks up Arabic and is written in Arabic. And I saw it click for my other students. They saw why the best schools in world history are diverse schools. We have it here. I speak on behalf of our members because I feel that we are the stewards of something beautiful and we need to do a better job of protecting it. The board has a responsibility to ensure that safety at the high school and our students are not safe. Students wander the halls without supervision or consequence. Our bathrooms have become predictable meeting places for coordinated group drug use and fighting. Students verbally assault teachers and practice blatant insubordination on a regular basis and have expressed their understanding that they know they will not face any real repercussions for these actions. Predictable physical violence has become normal because the board seems interested in pursuing dogma, over-assessing the full impact of its policies. The pendulum has swung from zero tolerance to zero consequences, and we feel the results have been disastrous. We want to press the board to allow the administration to implement sensible solutions. Our center of cosmopolitan learning, the legacies of these great schools, is not safe. We no longer have great hearts of cosmopolitan learning in Baghdad and Cordoba. It was unchecked violence by the Mongols and the Spanish that stuffed it out. We are the heart of cosmopolitan learning. We cannot learn if we are not safe. Remember, we already have it. Please protect it. Thank you.
For those of you that do not know, my name is Madeline Zink. I am the staff member mentioned in the email we all received, and I would like to give a brief impact statement on this week's events. In spring of 2015, I walked into AB Calc and realized the teacher I always looked forward to seeing was not there. The sub note he left read, "MZ will know what to do." I, in fact, did know what to do, and without this moment, I would not be standing here today. For the next six years of my life, every decision I made was to further the chances that I would pursue my dream job in my dream school, a school that made me fall in love with teaching and math, East Lansing High School. In 2015, I applied to college with the help of my AP Lit teacher and a killer essay about my AP Calc teacher. I was awarded a full ride to Michigan State, ensuring I would remain in our East Lansing community. Without the help of those two teachers, I wouldn't be standing here today. In 2017, while in college, three of my previous teachers reached out asking if I would be interested in being a student mentor in the Avid program here at ELHS. Without them, I wouldn't be standing here today. In July 2020, I was coaching swimming at Whole High School and applied for a job there. I was passed over, thank God, because just two weeks later, the same position became available here at East Lansing High School. The rejection didn't matter. I was home. Without the opportunities East Lansing Athletics provided for me, I would not be standing here today. In 2021, I needed to finish my last 60 hours of student teaching in my minor, which was earth science. Mid-pandemic, an East Lansing earth science teacher graciously took me in. During a time of chaos and hybrid learning, she made my future her priority. At the end of my student teaching, an old math teacher took me under her wing prior to going on maternity leave, letting me guest teach in her classroom for the last two months of school. Soon after, she found out she'd be moving and her job was open. Without them and their subtle intervention, I would not be standing here today. On June 3rd, 2021, after countless hours of interviews and applications, I got a phone call and my dreams had come true. I had the job and the district with the teachers that made me fall in love with teaching. The 2021-2022 school year was a test. Post-pandemic teaching was hard for everyone, but as a new teacher with literally no in-classroom experience, thank you for hiring me regardless, but teaching five hours of freshmen every single day, my dreams wavered. But due to the relationships I formed with these students, I am still standing here today. January 6th, 2023, I made some hard decisions to benefit the East Lansing High School family. I agreed to change my schedule for the second half of the year. I sacrificed the relationships I built with my students for the betterment of our staff's mental health, in turn sacrificing some of my own. But I joined this district knowing I was joining a family, the family that is the reason I am standing here today. January 19th, 2023. In an effort to maintain strong relationships with students, I had just lost that previous week. I volunteered at the boys' basketball game. Often coaching myself, I cherish the opportunity to support our students from the stands. Five overtimes and 157 minutes later, I left the building to go home and grade papers. But as many of you know at this point, that's not how my night ended. It ended after three more hours of conflict and panic and violence. And to be completely frank with you, I am still frozen in that moment, and it feels like it never ended. But the relationships I have with those students is the reason I am able to stand here today. January 20th, 2023. I woke up knowing I needed to come to school, not for myself, but for my students. Even if we did not learn algebra or geometry, I needed to be there for them. I needed to make sure that they were able to walk out of the school at the end of the day in one piece. With no sleep and still shaking from the night before, I walked into the building, and those that knew what had happened greeted me with an "Are you okay?" A question I did not know how to answer, still don't, but sure wasn't correct. No would have prompted more questions, questions I didn't have answers to as it had only been nine hours. By 8:00 AM, the room was spinning, and we knew last night's conflict was not the end. 8:42, I stood in the hallway, exactly 11 hours after the first incident, and watched it all occur again. At 8:46, I'm begging my students with their clenched fists and tears running down their faces to just hold my hand, making empty promises that everything would be okay. I'm only 24, and there's a fine line between being a friend and being a trusted grown-up in a student's life when truly some days I don't feel like an adult yet. Whatever I am to my students, the relationships I have with them are the reasons I am standing here today alive, the reasons that I can stand in the middle of these conflicts and walk away, the reason that the fights end, but also the reason that I keep getting hurt in the middle. As much as we and every other educational institution preach relationship building, I and we should not have to rely on our relationships we have with students to survive. For the past six years, I've dreamed of driving down Bercham every day to come to work. And for the past five days, I pull into the parking lot and break down, not knowing if I'm safer in the parking lot where it occurred or the school building. And it is 8:40, and my dream has become a nightmare.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Graham Flynn, and I'm a senior here at East Lansing High School. I've been attending this district my entire life. It's had its ups and downs, as any school would. But through it all, I felt safe coming to school every day. That was until this year. One just has to look around to see why and hear of these countless stories. But the bathrooms, just one great example. They're filled to the brim constantly with students skipping class, vaping, doing a whole host of other things that are definitely against the school handbook. All the while, they're intimidating anybody who wants to come in and simply use the restroom. My friends and I, we've basically sworn them off. And I know many others who have done the same, which is terrible in terms of equity, in terms of people feeling safe to go to the restroom, a basic right. But besides that, students are also treating their teachers like they don't even exist. Just looking at all of these fights, looking at Miss Zink, it's a shame. Students acting like teachers have no power over them, no power to tell them, you know, you've got to do this. If they are, just look at the teacher we've already heard about getting punched in the face. That was an accident, but if you get in the middle of these fights, I can't imagine what would happen. They're uncontrollable, and it's a real danger. And thinking about that from the student perspective, if teachers are at risk of getting beat up, being in the middle of these fights, thinking of that as a student is terrifying, right? If a fight just breaks out around you and suddenly you're in the middle, just like that, you're in the ER. I shudder to think about it. And if, God forbid, we were ever faced with an active shooter situation, I can't imagine what we'd do. If these fistfights are getting out of control, imagine what would happen then. I don't want to, but it feels like every day I have to think about it more and more every time I'm walking to school. I don't want to have to go to school wondering if I'll be able to come home safe to my family every day. I don't like wandering the hallways, just imagining of what could be, trying to get to class quickly. This is why, in my opinion, the best course of action the board can take is to get some form of security officers back in the school. Now, I understand the whole problem that we've had historically with police officers, getting rid of them in the wake of 2020 and all of that. I know the board did that with good intentions and heart, but they didn't provide an adequate solution. And in that void, we've had all of this starting to occur. I think it's one of the major factors. We need something, anything, to fill this void and to actually do something and have consequences for these students. But it just can't end here. I know the district has been utilizing restorative justice, which is a great idea in theory, right? And it works well in small-scale situations, can really mend relationships. But now is not the time for restorative justice. Now is the time for actions, for consequences, for these unexcusable behaviors. We need to put our fist down and say, this is not okay for our students to do this. It's unacceptable, and I don't think that students should feel unsafe to come to school because of it. Giving teachers the power and admin the power to punish these actions is necessary to restore order to this school, make it less like Lord of the Flies, and finally, let students feel safe to simply walk to class again. Thank you for your time.
Dyrin Chaples... Sorry. Chaples-Vargas, followed by Lori Vanderbusch and Maggie Shores.
Hello, Board. I'm Dyrin Chaples-Vargas. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I just came from my government hours to be transparent with you guys. But, you know, after hearing everybody talk today, I thought I'd use my voice as a senior. So I just want to really jump into it. 2019 was my freshman year, and we had security guards. And I don't know why I'm so nervous. My bad, guys. But 2019, I felt more safe than I do currently in 2023 because we have security guards, and security guards would make friendships with the students here at the school. So everything's really like more calm and safer. It felt safer than it does now. And I feel like we really need to think about implementing more security guards and more resource officers on campus due to situations that's been happening recently. So, yeah, that's a big point I wanted to bring up. Security just needs to be here because students and staff don't feel safe at this school. That's just a big issue that's prompted. Because I have a little brother, and I really want him to go to East Lansing. But the way East Lansing is headed right now, I can't see him going here. I couldn't, as an older brother, like, want him to be here, knowing how I feel now. So I also want to thank Ms. Zink, Maddie, for being a great teacher, coach, person. And I know you're always at the games, football games, always talking to students, and it's a lot to handle at times. So I want to thank you for always being there and showing up. I appreciate that, really. Yeah, that's really much it. Thank you, guys.
Hello. My name is Lori Vanderbusch. I'm up here with a lot of emotion right now. When I look around this room, and in this room over here, this is my village. I've raised five kids. My husband and I, Joshua, have raised five kids in East Lansing Public Schools. When we came and chose the school district, it was because I chose not to go back to Philadelphia. I wanted my kids to have a top-notch education. I wanted them in a diverse community. I wanted them in a safe community. I wanted to be in a community where I didn't lock my door. I gave many years of my life to volunteering here. When I think back 22 years ago when we thought about coming to EL, it's not the same EL that I once knew. On Friday morning, I helped my son, my youngest son, who's a junior, because all he could think about was that young woman right there, his life being taken from him. He's the baby at home now. His siblings are all off doing great, big things, huge things. I wish I could share some of them, but I can't. He was more concerned about his Maddie, his teacher, his water polo coach, someone who's become a peer or mentor, who's kind of filled the role of the big sister. If you guys know my family, you know how tight we are. I didn't get... Even my daughter-in-law is from here. We didn't get here without so many of you in this room. Mr. Pontoni, Tim Akers, everybody, Aaron Hansen, Jill Horn, Jerry Seika, Dave Rosin. If I'm... Adam Orange, if I'm missing anybody, forgive me. You know me. You know my kids, Maggie. You know my kids. My kids gave it their all here. I don't have the same pride as I once did. I've watched this district tank since 2012. 2012. In 2018, well, let me back up, 2017. Thank God for phones in the high school because I wouldn't have been aware of all the fights that were happening at the middle school and the high school. So I have a nice little file folder on my computer. And I have several dozens of nice little videos of kids and their fights. Dozens, 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 dozens. Christian graduated in 2012. Jakarta graduated in 2012. Noah Inglesby graduated in 2017. Hadley Vanderbusch graduated in 2020. Emery Vanderbusch in 2022. And Tobias is scheduled to graduate from East Lansing High School in 2024, but I gave him an out. I gave him an out. In 2018, at McDonald Middle School, my son was assaulted by a peer who came on him. Who came on him, came at Tobias, when he couldn't defend himself while he was eating his lunch and he lunged across the table. And he beat the pulp out of him, blood everywhere, damaged his retina. I got a nice phone call from our assistant principal. Come on in, we're going to talk about restorative justice. And you don't have to worry, the school district's going to press charges on your behalf. The young man's file caseload, Cinderblock Wide, was sitting on the table. I was reassured that he would not be left undetended the next time that he came back to school. A week later, roaming the halls freely. There's a very, very recognizable name on this list, on the list of students from Thursday night, from the list of students on Friday morning. Restorative justice does not work. You continue to put my child's life in danger, as well as all the teachers, administrators, and the children in this school district. To top it all off, this one will never leave my daughter's head. She got trapped in the corner in the locker commons last year, October. Covered in blood, not her own, but of her peers who were beating the pulp out of each other. She came home. She changed her clothes, she took a shower, but she'll never forget that. It's a culture and you have allowed it to happen in this school district. I hold you accountable. It's really, really bad when your child comes home and she knows exactly what teacher she can rely on. In the fear of danger, she knows who she can run home to. It's because she had to think about it all the time, every day. My kids don't know violence until they come to school. You brought this here. And this I hold you accountable for. I'm not going to be as nice as everybody else, but I want your resignations. I don't feel safe with my child here and I know I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Maggie Shores and then Megan Chumbly and then Norm Scott.
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Maggie Shores. I'm a sophomore here at East Lansing High School. And I'm coming up here today because I believe the board is more likely to listen to my voice than any of the community members. I'm here to share my story. My coaches are always the first people at the fight seat. They're my favorite people in the world. They put their lives at stake to protect mine. Sorry. I wake up every day, so excited to come to school to talk to my friends and my coaches, to go to practice, to depend on them. I had to walk out of my third hour on Friday because I received a text from my mom. She told me not to swear, but she said, what the F word is going on at East Lansing High School? Is there a gun? I was shaking, I was at hives. I texted my brother and I was like, we need to leave. My parents were like, come home right now. My life is not worth risking to be at school for three more hours to see if there's a horrible outcome to my day. I walked to my car, my, I like checked behind my back to see if my brother and his girlfriend were following close behind. If anything happens to my peers, I am holding the board accountable. This is not okay. I'm expecting change to happen. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm going to start, I wrote this down so I would keep my thoughts in order. But I first also want to thank the teachers and especially want to thank you, Maddie. Maddie coaches my daughter and has been just a saving grace for her all year. She's a freshman here. Both in the sport and in the classroom and with social issues and truly has this relationship with Caroline. Caroline would probably not come to school if it wasn't for Maddie. And I want to thank all East Lansing teachers. That being said, my name is Megan Chumbly. I have been a parent in the district for a long time. I have four children in the district, including an exchange student as well as incoming kindergartner. That being said, three of these children are currently here at East Lansing High School. I have a freshman, a sophomore, and a junior here. I am coming to you with concerns around safety and recent fights here at the high school. I have many concerns and questions, but most importantly, come with you with my main concern of a safe learning environment for all. That includes the students and the staff. Teachers are marketable. If I work in the field, they can work anywhere. They could work anywhere they want in this entire state right now and they choose to be here. They show up. Maddie shows up. She shows up every day. They all show up. They don't have to. They can work anywhere. I have been aware of the fights this year and in the years passed at the middle school. I have addressed them at the middle school many, many times. Those children now are here. They have continued to move through your system. They were flagged at a very young age, nothing was done. Restorative justice was delivered to me at the middle school and here we are again. Now they're bigger at the high school, the same kids. I referred to the middle school as Jumanji. That's what it reminded me of. Someone here said Lord of the Flies? Yeah, that's a perfect example of what I envision happens here. Recently, I've seen videos of these fights and they are greatly alarming in serious fights. This is not a little bit of pushing around. Someone is going to get killed here. Someone is going to die at this school. If you, and if you haven't seen the videos, I would encourage you to watch them. They are floating everywhere. My child came home with them. She came home with them from Friday. She came home with a one in October. The one in October by the locker rooms was terrifying. Recently, videos of these fights have been greatly alarming. They're serious fights. The fact that a gun was seen in the last fight was greatly alarming and communication was slow around this. Had we known this had occurred, we would have chosen not to allow our children in the building Friday. Following is there had been no disciplinary action taken with a very serious offense. What is the consequence for fighting and having weapons involved? Why were these children at the school the following day to reengage in the fight? The teachers spoke up about the concern. They spoke up and nothing was done. Teachers and students were fearful and felt unsafe. Teachers in this building locked their doors and students were told to exit the building immediately at the end of the day. They were told the doors were being locked to keep them safe. I have heard that there's a need for evidence. What is this evidence you are looking for? What is it? Are videos and witness accounts not evidence? Are we waiting for serious injury to occur? What is the protocol here? There were a few things about the communication that further concerned me. First was the idea that these were two groups, is how it was worded, that are continuing to fight. Are they groups or is it more? Someone here said it was organized, sounds organized. Is it a gang mindset occurring here in this building? I am concerned that police are on the standby, that's what my letter said, and seem to wait until injury has occurred to be present. Why is this? We are just waiting for students as we know there are no options, right? We're, oh, I'm sorry. We are just waiting for injury to occur. How many of these events do we need before we can look for another way to educate these students? We now know post-COVID, there are different ways to teach kids. They don't have to come in the building to be taught. They don't have to come in the building to have an equitable education. In the parent email, it stated that student who had the gun was not an in-person student. I have questions about this as I also have students taking online courses. If the student is an online student, do they have access to the building? Mine do. They can come here and work if they choose. So even if the child had a gun, they were able to come in the building the next day if they chose? Was this gun recovered or was it grabbed when the crowd dispersed? I'm almost done too. Another concern is that my children are starting to think this is normal behavior. Teachers and families will leave. Teachers can teach anywhere. Are you, I trust you daily to keep the most important people in my life safe. Are you doing this? I tell my kids goodbye daily with a pit in my stomach, knowing that they could be injured in your care. I have prepped them all to evacuate your buildings regardless of district plan of hiding. Please do better. What does East Lansing Public School accept as a safe and thriving environment? Is this it?
There's a change in the order. Nina Van Adren, followed by Kristen. You guys are killing me. Vander Thier and then Tobias Vanderbusch, then Norm. Oh, sorry, Norm, not you again. Then Dalton McGraw.
I'm a sophomore here, here at ELHS. After hearing many people that I look up to and love dearly speak today, I felt the need to come up. Last Friday, when I came to school, I was not aware of the incidents that had happened until a friend of mine told me. Immediately, I felt so unsafe in a place that I thought I came to, to learn. I wake up and I don't want to come to school, not because I don't want to learn, see my friends, and especially not because of my teachers. But because I don't feel safe. Every time I step into a hallway, I wonder if there's someone that may have a firearm. And that's not something a student should have to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Think it's me, Kristen Fettner?
Yep.
Okay, it's Fettner.
Sorry.
Um, that's okay. Totally fine. It's spelled crazy. Um, okay, I'm not going to reinvent the wheel and tell you all a bunch of stuff you've already heard. Just want to touch on a couple of things. I'm a staff member here at East Lansing High School. I've been with the district for eight years. I've been at the high school. This is my second year. One of the things that I really enjoy doing is taking tickets at sporting events. So at football, at basketball games, soccer, all of that. I was here last Thursday when this whole event happened. And I just want to say, I know that some of the boys who were involved in the fight and the boy who had the gun in his backpack were let in a different door. So they did not come through my door. They were let in by another student at another door. Why isn't our school safe? Why are students allowed to open the doors and let whoever come into the building? Why is that happening, is what I want to know. Also, you know, and I know that you heard, I think it was three weeks ago, I don't know, the week before finals, that happened again. Some students let in some people into our building. Two of the people, as far as I know, were unknown who they were. They weren't students. They were unknown people into the building. Why is this happening? Why aren't we safe in our schools? Why aren't, why am I not safe at work? Why aren't students safe when they're here at class? You know, we enacted a policy after fights and problems that were happening at the football games that there are no backpacks allowed. These students who were let in in this door had backpacks. They had backpacks in the gym because they came in a different door. They didn't come through my door because I wouldn't have let them bring backpacks in. But there were backpacks in the gym. Why didn't an administrator walk up to them and say, what's up with these backpacks, guys? That's not allowed and kick them out or say, you got to put your backpack somewhere, like why wasn't? And one of those backpacks had a gun in it. Oh my God, what is going on? I'm trying so hard not to swear. I'm such a swearer. You know, I know, you guys are pointing, you know. And all I know is that our school has adopted the Outback slogan, no rules, just right. Why is this happening? Why aren't we safe? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Good afternoon. My name is Tobias Vanderbusch. I'm a junior at East Lansing High School. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but after hearing what everybody else had to say and some of my peers, I felt like I was given a privilege to have a voice and I'm going to use it. I'm one of many students who are bringing concern to the, bringing concern to the precautions that have not been taken and the failure to make an environment safe enough for the young generations that will fill your seats when the time comes. I should not have to fear about my peers, my teachers, my administrators, my coaches' safety, along with my own. We all have a right to a proper education and you have our administrator, our administration's hands tied in their attempts to give us one. The ratio of students to teachers is 23 to one and I know one of my coaches would do anything in their power to protect me. But who is there to protect them from the emotional and physical harm being brought upon them on a day-to-day basis? And I think it's time that many of you on this board need to take accountability. Thank you.
Dalton McGraw.
Hey, guys. I'm Dalton. I went to school here. I was lucky enough to transfer in because my mom's worked at the district for 30 or so years. And it's pretty concerning to me, honestly. I'm a new employee here also. It's pretty concerning to see how far downhill the school district has gone in terms of staff safety and student safety. Went on Friday, you know, it's 9:00 AM and I get a call from my mom who's right upstairs. And she says, hey, don't come up here, there could be a kid with a gun. You know how hard it is when your mom or your brother or your sister, whoever it is? I don't think you guys know.
My kids here, I do know.
Okay, but you guys aren't here every day. You don't see what goes on. And it's bullshit, you know? I shouldn't have to worry about my mom's life that because you guys refused or whatever to inform us about a huge safety risk. I mean, that's just ridiculous. You guys should be here seeing what goes on every day. You guys should come to the school. You guys should see what these teachers and these students have to deal with. It's absolutely ridiculous. The amount of times I'm walking through the hallways, kids in the bathrooms, kids letting in other kids or I don't even know if they're students, through doors. And you say something and the kids ignore you. It's impossible because the admins' hands are tied by you guys. And they're not allowed to even punish the kids sometimes, it seems like. And it's, I feel bad for these kids. You know, I was proud, I was proud to be able to go here and I was very thankful that East Lansing welcomed me in with such open arms. But if someone asked me today, you know, hey, should I send my kid here? Honestly, my answer would be no. If someone asked me, hey, is that a fun place to work or a safe place to work? My answer would be no. If a teacher, you know, my friends who teach in other school districts, hey, the job opening here, what do you think? I'd say, look elsewhere, you know? You don't get any support sometimes. Yeah, the teachers here and the staff here, I think are amazing. But it hurts me to see some teachers that, you know, helped me so much in high school, their hands are completely tied. It hurts that they're being disrespected sometimes all day. And, you know, like I said, I'm new. This is my first board meeting, but it seems like there's a huge lack of help from your end. And these teachers and staff deserve it so much more. I mean, the amount of care that they give these students. You know, it does, it makes me proud to call them my coworkers. You know, I'm glad that they're here trying their best every day. But people like Maddie, she shouldn't be dealing with this shit. I mean, it's ridiculous. You guys need to step it up. You know, I was excited to get a job here this year. But, you know, it's not that exciting having to come to work and your mom calls you and say, hey, just so you know, there's a fight. There might be a gun and her office is 20 feet away from that. Luckily, she's able to close multiple doors. And, and, you know, but it doesn't feel good knowing that your own mother is upstairs, potentially in a violent situation. And I feel helpless. And I feel like the staff and students here really don't get enough support for how good East Lansing used to be, especially when I was here. It's just something needs to be done. These teachers and these students. These teachers and these students, for the most part, I think, are incredible. There's plenty of nice students I've met, even though I don't interact with them that much. But, you know, they shouldn't have to come up here and address you guys in tears because you failed so many times to make them feel safe. I think it's a huge concern. My parents think it's a huge concern. I shouldn't have to get calls from my dad and my uncle, who work at different school districts, before, they know before me. You know, that's ridiculous, so. I really do hope you guys do better. Like I said, this is my first board confi, board meeting, but I don't feel very confident. But I hope you change my opinion as a new employee, as a previous, you know, East Lansing student. I really do hope you, you make the change that these students and these teachers deserve. Because on, at the end of the day, it's on you guys to make a change and support these students and teachers with whatever they need to get their jobs done and to feel safe when they come to work or come to school. Thanks.
Gretchen Rogowski.
Hello. I'm going to try and lower this mic a little bit. Um, so, sorry, I was first pressed with this, but I'm sorry if my voice is shaking, I'm a little bit nervous, I'm not great at public speaking. Um, so I know that I indicated on the form that I submitted for public comments, school safety, but I kind of wanted to elaborate a little bit more about school culture and student culture within kind of the context of that safety concerns. Um, I'll first preface this with the statement that I'm sure a lot of people are going to tell themselves when they think that this isn't a problem, and that it's, I'm just one seventeen-year-old girl. I don't speak for the entire mass of students who not only attend the high school, but attend the district in whole. I try to get involved. I go out there, I worked the elections, so I saw a lot of my staff members. I checked Ms. Feta in for her voting. You're all in elected positions, so I really do, like, I understand the impact that people have on a society and a culture. And for me at least, and again, I'll speak for myself, my relationships with not only my community, my family, my school, just society in general is built on trust. When I wake up in the morning and I drive myself, my sisters and my other car mates to school, I get on the road and I trust that the people that are standing, or driving on that road are not under the influence, they're not drunk, they're not completely exhausted, they have their license, they're driving safely. I put that trust into them because that's what I believe that a society should be, that's what a community should be. I get to school and I expect that in the community, that I'm going to be respected for myself, my identity, my words, my opinions, as I respect others for their opinions and theirselves and their safety. And I think what I would like to communicate to not only board, but parents and other people, that the way I see it, that the student community here at East Lansing High School has lost all trust for their peers, their teachers, their staffs, because, and I'll say this, I, to my knowledge, have not left school early or feel particularly compelled to leave school early based on a violence-based concern. And recently, and I'll say recently up into this year, because I don't think that this is a last-week incident, that's changed because I no longer have that trust that I feel comfortable staying here because I know that my teachers are well-informed to make the decision not to tell me to go home. And I know that my teachers are well-informed because the admin has well-informed them. And I know that they are well-informed because someone else has informed them. And that chain goes all the way up, and I don't necessarily know or believe that the chain should end somewhere. But I want to enter every classroom and knowing that I have all of the information and that my staff members and staff members, my teachers that I see every day, they feel comfortable and supported giving their opinions to students. If I, and I'm not saying that any of my teachers have done this, but if I walked into a room and my teacher looked at me and said, "I don't feel comfortable staying here", that's not going to make me feel comfortable as a student, that's not going to make my peers feel comfortable as a student. And of the peers that I've talked to, and not just for my friends, but others, it's hard when you feel as though your teacher is in the same boat that you are, which is in the dark, lonely, and feeling completely unsupported and unnurtured. "Nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens" is an East Lansing motto. I mean, it was read off at the beginning of all of the board meetings. And I think that, right now, standing as myself, as a seventeen-year-old girl, someone who is not able to do most things, not considered an adult in the eyes of the law, has to make my own decisions regarding my safety, not only my safety, but my sister's safety and my friend's safety. My sister last year saw a student get their head cracked open over a piano. She did not leave school because none, no teachers were concerned because that was, again, something that was normalized. It was something that, if not all of the information is present, then it is not enough, and your opinion is not important enough, to make a decision on whether you should be in school or out of school. I believe that, and again, I don't want to say like it's one of you, or teachers, or principal, or someone like that, that does have the power, or does have the education, does have the responsibility, or the mindset, that they should be the one making that call. But I don't want to be in the dark on who that person is. I don't want to wonder, "Who is the person making this decision? Is anyone even thinking about this? Is anyone even aware?" Because it's the thing that I think I'm seeing mostly with these people standing up and talking, is that they are genuinely in the dark if anyone's even hearing their concerns, if anyone is hearing their child's safety stories, if, again, lawsuits are being followed up on, if, and again, I, I hate using this as an example, but the bathrooms, they're a disaster. Personally, again, my philosophy is if it's not directly affecting me, I don't really care. And I get that that's not a great opinion to have, but it is my opinion. And that is, is, at a certain point, when do I have to start to care? I'll finish up real quick. Um, like, again, I guess what I want to leave you with today, tonight, whatever, how you want to end this meeting, and again, I really don't want you losing sleep over this, is just thinking of myself as a representative of my peers and just a larger group of high school students as someone who has lost all hope in this entire district and this entire education system because I feel utterly alone and unsupported. And I know that I have zero confidence that my teachers feel supported. I have zero confidence that my admin feels supported because there's nothing that shows me that. Thank you and have a good night.
Do you want to get crab Kwiana, or do you want to go next? Kwiana Davis.
Good evening to my Board of Directors, Superintendent Lico, my staff, students, and the community. I wasn't going to speak, but I definitely have a lot to say. Um, so I'll try to make it short. I just took a couple of notes from the heart to try to stay concise. "It takes a village. Accountability is not the responsibility of one or two, but of the village. And it, accountability, has felt lonely. Detention for tardies means phone calls from parents excusing them. Suspensions often end in negotiation. Hall sweeps have been met with long emails ending in someone's many letters and credentials expressing how they disagree with administration's means to control school culture. Things that our collective administrative team present with seriousness are seemingly met with a sense of distrust. No blame to place, rather, a call to action, and I'm ready to problem solve. This has a lot of our community members in a space of fight or flight. You hired a fighter in me. Cultures shift, and it is our job, especially as educators, to shift and evolve with it. And adolescents need boundaries, and ours are, as I've come to find, quite flexible. I need my village behind me, all of us. Holding our babies accountable and truly nurturing each child, educating all students, and genuinely building world citizens. Thank you."
Thank you. Community members, that's okay. Community members, Superintendent Lico, members of the board, I'm Norm Scott, special educator at McDonald Middle School, and ELEA president. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you very much to, uh, Ms. Licos for attending the Friday afternoon staff meeting at the high school. I'm sure that was very uncomfortable, but irresponsiveness, uh, from leadership like that is greatly appreciated, so thank you. Clearly, there's real work to be done, and it's critical that we all, uh, come together. We can't continue on the path we've been on, the road. That road has too much potential for disaster. There's a climate of uncertainty regarding what is tolerated and what isn't right now at the high school. Too many of the staff and students at the high school do not feel safe or supported at school right now, clearly. It includes every work group and grade level. Teachers and administration on the ground level need more support, establishing and maintaining a consistent level of safety. We have to act on this immediately and through the lens of equity. But make no mistake, it starts with this board, it starts tonight. We got to get to work on this immediately. It can't wait. We understand East Lansing's on the cutting edge of, uh, social justice intervention. So we knew there would be challenges. Change is always hard and challenging. But clearly, right now, there are too many educators frustrated with the policies that are in place and the climate of uncertainty that exists at the high school. We must work to ensure that the integrity of the educational setting is protected for the benefit of everyone. This means we have a lot of work to do. Work that can't wait until next year's PD Planning Committee. It has to start tonight. We have to continue, if we are going to be, continue to be the outstanding district we are. We owe it to our students and the parents to have in place and provide for them an always safe and predictable learning environment. We owe it to our administrators to provide a level of autonomy with regard to a menu of supports and interventions and options for them to work with teachers to help curb unproductive, unsafe, and violent behaviors. And we certainly owe it to the teachers and support staff to give them the trust and respect they deserve so they can continue to do what they are otherwise very well-equipped to do. We urge you, please start right away. Change has to happen, we need real action right away. Thanks for your time.
Kitty Smith? I'm sorry, Smint? Is it Smith?
Hello? Okay, I don't public speak often, um, and I wasn't planning on doing so tonight. But as I sat here, I had the realization that I'm support staff in this building, and part of that is me supporting the teachers. Um, Maddie is my best friend in this state. We coach together, we coach the same kids. And on Thursday night, I was her first phone call. I got to walk into this building on Friday, knowing what had happened, and every teacher that I looked at, I wanted to tell because I knew that they did not know. And then I watched Maddie walk into this building, and I saw the look on her face, and I knew that she was not okay. Um, I told her I would cover her classes. I told her I would find someone to help her. I said I would sit in the corner of her classroom because I have the ability to do that because I am support staff and I support the staff. And Maddie's the staff, but she's also my best friend. And approximately 8:30, as I watched all the administrators in our building sit in the hub for the entirety of first hour, creating some kind of plan for how to deal with the day. While they did that, the students were also planning what they were going to do with their day. And Maddie texted me and said, "It's going to happen again." It's always Maddie. It's because the kids love her, um, and it's because she's the nice one, and I'm the mean one. Um, our kids that we coach constantly, Mom Dad Us, that's what they call it. They'll ask me, and when I say no, they ask Maddie. Um, and I ran to her room, and as I ran to her room, to the administrator's credit, they all came out and were like, "What's going on?", because we were all on high alert. And Maddie got to walk in and tell them once again that they had seven minutes to figure out what they were going to do. And I understand that that's an impossible situation, but in the face of that, I think we all know the building should have been locked down. Um, my understanding is that the students that started the fight on Friday morning didn't actually attend their first hour, that they were hiding in the bathroom, and I don't know that that's accurate. Um, I may be wrong. But to the administrator's benefit, it's hard to pull a student out of class that you don't know, well, you don't know that they're in the building. Like, you don't know that they're not in class, and you don't know where they are, and you don't know where to find them. And so I stood in the hallway and I watched every district administrator upstairs in the comments. Um, but at the end of the day, that didn't have to be fifteen people trying to stop that fight, it could have been ninety. Um, and I knew that. And I looked at every teacher that walked through the middle of that comments, knowing that they had no idea what was going on. And I felt morally reprehensible for not telling them. But I also felt like I had to say, "No comment", because it was not public information and they hadn't made that public. And at the end of the day, am I liable for saying something if it's not been validated? And who am I to decide what the school is allowed to distribute? Um, so I said, "No comment" for six hours, um, knowing exactly what had happened. And at the end of the day, Maddie is the nice one, and I am the mean one, and I'm here to say that you put her in an atrocious situation. Maddie was not asked on Thursday night whether, like, like, she said she saw a gun, and she was asked, "Are you sure it's not a water gun?", okay? Like, it landed on her foot. She's not going to say that, but like, it touched her. And she was asked, "Are you sure it's not a BB gun? Have you ever seen one?" And then Maddie had to go home on Friday night after dealing with that. And I'm going to tell you right now that my husband is a cop. And Maddie said, "Let me see your gun, I want to make sure." And she picked it up and she dropped it on the ground, and she said, "Yep, that's what it looks like. That's what it sounded like. That's what it felt like when it hit my foot." And then Maddie slept at my house. And then Maddie came to school today, and now Maddie's crying. Um, and I just want to point out the fact that Maddie is going to be very nice about this. Maddie probably won't quit her job. Maddie will probably come in, and Maddie will be the person that gets hurt. Maddie is the person where both sides of this conflict will hold her hand. Like, she can walk, walk into the middle of this fight, and she can pull one kid from one group, and the other kid from the other group, and they will stand there and hold their hands together. And she's not the only person like that. We have other support staff in the building, other teachers in the building that have relationships with both groups of these students in that way. And at the end of the day, those are the people that you're supposed to treasure, and those are the people that you are using as cannon fodder. That's not okay. You know, like, I texted my husband from school, and he said, "Why are there cops here? I'm bringing you coffee." And he sat with me for lunch, you know? And he watched all of these kids go home. Not because they thought that they were going to get shot, but because they didn't trust that someone could keep them from getting shot. Um, I work in this building as support staff, but I have a teaching certification. Um, there was an English position that just opened, I believe you're filling it tonight. I chose not to apply. Thank you.
I currently have no further public comment. Is there anybody else that wants to make public comment before we close? Public comment. Thank you. If there's any more, please send them forward or send them over to Ms. Hoakor. Nick Chenault.
Hello, board. Um, I'm a senior here at East Lansing. And, uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Inc. for everything she's done for all these students. Last Friday, I was leaving the game in my car, looking to just go home, go to sleep, go on with my weekend. And I turned the corner and all I see is twenty kids swinging at each other. And Ms. Inc. is the only one there. So, the only thing I can think of was get out. I hope one of the best teachers that we have at this school. In Little Dino, there was a firearm within four feet of me, and I had no clue, on my own school property. And we had administrators, I saw my own principal get hit in the back of the head and kind of stumble, and all I could think about is, "What is going on?" We're in a school event, and we only have two people, administrators, out there with another student trying to break up a fight. That is unacceptable. That is absolutely outrageous. And she volunteers her time to help these students, and all she can do is stand there. Sorry. All she can do is stand there and pull them back and hold them. The fact that this board has taken away all security, any safety measures that we have in this school is crazy. We need security guards in this school immediately. I have a little sister, she's a freshman. She has Ms. Inc. as a teacher. I don't want her to go to the stool anymore. I don't feel her, have her, I don't have her safe here. Whenever there's an announcement over the loudspeakers, I worry that they're going to say, "We're in a..." "We're in a lockdown, shut your doors," and I have to worry about my little sister, who is 15, and I don't know if she's gonna be safe. The fact, once again, that this school board has taken away all resources, any safety in this school is crazy. My freshman year, I had a really close connection with some of those guards, and I felt safe. Now, I am so excited to leave this school and graduate, just to get out of this building. I'm a big spirit guy. I run the bar school here. A lot of people know me. And you'd think that I'd wanna be in this school, be excited, be around here, be with all my peers. I don't wanna be at this school. I don't come feel safe coming to this school anymore. And it is on all of you guys on this board. Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Can you get a blue sheet and fill it out, please? I don't wanna take a break before board discussion because everybody's here. Are we okay with that? We could take a break?
I couldn't hear what you said, Kath.
I wanna, I don't wanna take a break.
Yeah.
So we will move on to board discussion. This is a period of time where the board can speak to any issue that they choose. They may speak to some of the comments that you have made. We may choose not to speak. It doesn't mean that we haven't heard you, we haven't listened. But some of us may need to process and are not ready to speak at this point in time. Now, open the floor to all of you to make comments as you see fit.
I'll speak first. I was just sworn in last week, two weeks ago, to the board, so I am really going, I'm processing still. But I want you all to know that I'm listening, that we're listening. I'm taking notes, and I understand the magnitude of our position up here. And I thank you all for speaking tonight, and I don't take my position lightly. So thank you.
So I'll say a few things. I took a lot of notes, processing a lot because a lot of this stuff I have not heard. There's some things that I have heard, but there's a lot that I haven't. And that might be surprising to you. How are you a board member, and you don't know these things? Well, not everything goes to the board. It doesn't have to go to the board. We have administrators who, you know, are taking care of their buildings, and it's not a board issue that they need to bring. But I hear you all. I have kids, not in the high school, but in the elementary, and this is scary stuff. And I do not... I'm gonna start crying, so I gotta stop because I don't wanna cry. I want you to know that I hear you, though. I hear your concerns. We have a lot of work to do, and I know all of us here, well, I shouldn't say that, but I know because I know you all personally, that we are gonna put the work in. Yeah, I have to, I have to process, so... But yeah, I just want you to know that I've heard every single comment. I take it very seriously. This is not something, you know, want you to leave today, and they're not gonna do anything. No, this is something that, you know, it's very concerning. And so I just, I'll leave it at that and let anyone else speak.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and take a stab at this. And I'm just gonna preface this by saying that if I had time to sit and write out my thoughts, I'm absolutely certain it would be more coherent than what I'm gonna say now. So I hope that you can please give me some grace with that. Quinn, don't take my picture right now, please. I'll pose for you later. But I have a child in this building. Many of the people who spoke tonight are personal friends of mine. I take this extremely seriously. The reason I ran for the board two years ago was because I had been watching, at least to my mind, the quality of the academics decline. And I guess I just wasn't as aware of the other shifts that were going on within the district. I am fully committed to supporting the staff and the administration in whatever they need to get this under control immediately. I am very interested in all of the ideas that the staff brought forth, and I know that Superintendent Laco and the central administration are gonna do the same thing. And I guess part of me, I have a couple different thoughts that I've jotted down here. I, one of the first thoughts is that the culture begins very young, and some people made that point. And so as we make changes, I think it's really important that we not only do them at the high school and the middle school, but that we start early and that at the elementary level, we begin creating the culture that we want to bring forward. This can't just be a high school-only or middle school-only solution. So that's one point that I think I personally feel strongly about. The other thing is, a lot of people came forward tonight and said that things have been brought to the board, and the board has tied hands. And so the research I am going to commit to doing is figuring out which of the policies we currently have that the administration feels like are tying their hands because I am not aware of those, and that is my fault and my responsibility. I have read the board policy, you know, the handbook. And when I voted to approve the new policies, which we did last January, I did not see problems with them, and I take full responsibility for that. So going forward, I'd like to know more about which policies are problematic and what we can do about that. But I think I'd like to close in the fact that I actually, despite all of this, feel hopeful because the first step in solving a problem is identifying it. And all of you have come forward tonight and identified, feels like, thousands of different holes. Okay, I'm sorry. Other people have spoken through tears, and I'll do the same thing. But I do feel like this is the step, the first step in the right direction. My child has told me the same thing about the bathrooms, and she will be mortified that I'm going to share this. But she does not use the bathrooms at all during the day unless she goes with friends. She spends the entire day, and she comes home, and her first trip at home is to the bathroom because she's been holding it all day. And that has always been unacceptable, and it happened at the middle school, too. So I just want everyone in the community to hear that I am fully committed to working to support the staff and the administration in whatever they need.
You know, I don't wanna speak long, but I do feel a responsibility to say a few things. You know, we're a team. We're supposed to be a family. And I know that the people in this room, in this building, in this district are a group of people who care deeply, right? And part of my responsibility as a board member is to serve as a representative of our community, to support students, to support our teachers and our staff and our broader community. And, you know, it's a job that I love. It's something, you know, even when emotions are high, even when, you know, even when it's hard, it's a job that I love, even nights like tonight. I appreciate hearing from people because it means that people care about what's happening in our schools. Being a part of a community that's invested in its education is part of the reason I wanted to be on the school board. And so to hear so many people that I trust and respect, particularly our teachers, let us know that we're failing in our job is not something that sits well with me. It's not... I receive that criticism fully, and I'm committed to taking action. I know that all of us are. You know, we want to be part of the solution, and so know that we hear you. And you will see action. You know, we wanna work together with experts in our district, our administrators and our teachers, who know the best about what our kids need. And our job is to give them those resources. And so we will work together in commitment to do that. Yeah, I just, I don't, I'm not sure what else to say. It's hard to, it is not easy, you know? And the job is not to be easy, you know? I don't, this is part of the job, to hear from our community members. So I don't have any qualms about that. But at the same time, it is hard to be failing at a job that you want to do well, that you take on because you want to be a service, to be a positive contributor to our community. We're all up here because we have that same commitment. So know that we hear you, know that we care. And as much as we, is in our power, is in our power to make change, we will. And we won't stop until we do that.
Yeah, so like Tally, I'm also new to the board, so I really appreciated hearing everything you had to say. I did not know most of it. And I ran for the board because I was a special ed teacher, and the reason I'm not in the classroom anymore is because I was assaulted by students, and my administration didn't listen to me. That's not here. I wanna be clear, that wasn't in this district. But I ran because I wanted to be a teacher voice. I take it seriously. I know what it feels like to feel like you're in danger, sorry, and not feel like you're being listened to. So thank you for speaking tonight.
I think all, most of us, I guess, have children who go to school in this district. I have a son at the high school, an 11th grader, who was on the outskirts of the fight, pulling children out. So this hits home for me, too. I am not here encouraging fights. I am not here saying, you know, bad behavior should be championed. Someone earlier said, "We've gone from zero tolerance to zero respect," I think was the word. And as the longest-standing member on this board, and many accusations felt very directed at me. And I have very thick skin. Yeah, thank you, Lori. I do take, I do, I have listened to everything. I take it all, I'm taking it all in. But I do not... Let me, let me say this. When I ran for school board for the first time 12 years ago, there was a child who had been tased here in our school district. We had an SRO. It was an outside police officer came in and tased a student for disrespectful behavior. There was another child who had been denied an inhaler. School resource officer was on site, and that child is now permanently disabled. And so there were fights. The students were disciplined, often with expulsion, often directed at black and brown students. And so I did come in and hope to change the climate. There's no question about that. Expelling every student that gets in a fight isn't the solution. And readmitting students several, 17 times without any change in how they're going to be addressed isn't the solution either, and that is not my solution. I do think we are a team. We are, we should be working together. I've been endorsed by the MEA four times. So the idea that I somehow don't like or don't support teachers is a fallacy as well. I wanna, I want this to end as much as anyone does. I also can cite numerous examples where a kid gets in a fight, is suspended, comes back to school, graduates, goes on to college. And so I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater. We need to, as Norm had said earlier, we need to work together to find the medium where our students are supported, where our students feel safe, where our black and brown students aren't tased, arrested, criminally charged, as often happens when there's a school resource officer. As Superintendent Laco said earlier, two of our security officers are student advocates. They're here in the building, they're just not carrying a gun. They are here working with students every day. We have five individuals who are in the hallways, who are, who are, who are working to keep students safe versus a school resource officer who was temporary, part-time, and two armed security, I'm not even sure if they were armed, two unarmed security officers who are basically the same people, they're just not wearing a uniform. I hear all your concerns. I am not supportive of kids vaping and smoking in the bathrooms. I don't know why that comes down to some sort of board permissiveness. We have a code of conduct. We have policies. So having said all of that, there were a few people this evening that had very specific suggestions. Mark Pontoni, I think Norm had a few. I didn't catch them all, all right? Okay. I would like those shared with the entire board. "I just don't feel safe" isn't helpful. Very specific suggestions. If kids are letting other students, I don't support that. None of us here supports students letting other students into the building without a consequence. This building was built before Columbine. It's not necessarily the safest building. We've attempted to make it as safe as possible. It's not. And so, you know, but on the other hand, can we chain all the doors? No, because we have to be able to get out in a fire. So suggestions on how to address these issues would be what is helpful. And, and specific policies that you feel are tying your hands would be helpful. Specific measures to, to enable students to feel safer, that is what is helpful. Any of those can be emailed to us. Several of these people are much faster typers and writers than I am, so I can get them from, from those individuals as well. I have another child coming up to go to the high school. I've had six graduate from this high school or five graduate from this high school. You know, I'm as invested as anybody else in this community in our students being safe. I do have to say one other thing in that I understand this gun was very frightening to you, Maddie, and to anybody who had heard about that. That is terrifying, that is horrifying. We have also worked on resolutions to keep guns out of our school. None of us wants to see guns in our school. Resolutions on gun safety that have gone to the Senate and so forth. In some, you know, some of that, our hands are just as tied. Now, obviously, keeping backpacks out of the school, preventing students from letting other students in through the doors, these are measures that we can, we can enact to keep you feel safer. I wish guns didn't exist, personally, and then none of us would have to worry about that. But I do appreciate all the comments that were made this evening. We have to support all of our students, and, and I appreciate the superintendent's comments. Mistakes were made. She owned up to it. We own up to it as her boss. We will do better as far as the communication piece. That's hugely important. And, you know, that's, that's all of our goal. Thank you.
I'm not a board member, but I have a couple things to say. I don't have thick skin. It may have been evident. I'm continually working on it. Just know a couple things. My emotion about this is a result of my deep care of our kids, of our staff, of our people, of this place. I don't wanna work anywhere else. I will not resign. I will not walk away. I will stay here with Kiana, my friend and colleague, and everybody else, and, and fight. Like, that's what we're here to do. We will make changes. We, my Assistant Superintendent Glenn, Claudia Burton, our Director of Equity and Social Justice, we at 8 o'clock this morning were upstairs, meeting with high school admin, already addressing this. We have another meeting scheduled tomorrow already. We aren't sitting on it. We aren't brushing anything under the rug. I said this at the meeting Friday to high school staff. Like, I hope you don't expect we're gonna be able to come out tomorrow with a bunch of promises and changes made. It's gonna take some thoughtful time to make sure we can do it and do it well and get everybody on board with it. Some of the changes that have been suggested, suggested, don't take any board action. They can be done with support and preparation and organization just at the building level. Some may take more, and that's what we'll sit down and analyze and figure out what to do. And my emotions, my sensitivity is just what comes with me. And I, I, I'm committed to working with all of you to make this a safer and better place. So please hang with us to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, any further comment? Alright, we will move on to action items. Can I get a motion? Sorry, I'm just going to charge through.
No, that's fine. Are, you want all of them together or individually?
No, 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 one at a time.
Okay. I move the Board of Ed- let's just take a minute and let-
Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Take a five-minute break.
Sorry, is there water anywhere?
We're going to take a five-minute break. $29.58.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Uh, passes six-zero. Trusty Fink is not in the room. Can I get a motion for the second action item?
I move the Board of Education approve the new high school course, Exploring Education, as presented.
Uh, any discussion on this issue? Do you want to talk about it at all or?
This one makes me very happy.
And, happy and sad.
I mean, I could talk about it, but um either Ashley Short, Spack, or Glenn have really been a little more involved in it. If you have any questions, I mean, I can give you an overview. The the ISD is going to be starting, uh, the Wilson Talent Center is going to be starting a program that will prepare teachers, uh, prepare students to be teachers or um uh early childhood educators and uh which our students could participate in as juniors or above and come out of uh high school with 10th grade? Ninth grade?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, just the, yes, 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 yes. Sorry, the ISD part is not 11th and 12th. But they would come out with an associate's degree and some credits that would get them going with their teaching degree. So as a way to um kind of accomplish some of our goals around uh teacher recruitment, um inter- getting kids interested in teaching, um getting students with diverse backgrounds interested in teaching. We want to get them really, um, we want to start a class here that might then feed into that program. And that's what the Selective is all about. Oh, I should have mentioned Sheri is here as the identified teacher um for this course already. So if you have specific questions, Ashley or Sheri, maybe Glenn would be the best resources, but um I'm super excited and supportive of this because I think we can hopefully build some commitment to our district and bring some of our kids back.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll just add, I don't know, do you all want to say anything about Sheri? Do you want to say something about the course since you're here and made it through the hole?
Awesome.
And I would just add, we did a pre-scheduling survey just last week. Um, and this was on the option board. Um, and we certainly have interest to run a section of this class. It looks like just from that preliminary data that we got from from students. It's not their formal scheduling process, it's just a a pre-scheduling. Hey, what do you think you might like to do next year? Um, and there, there was definitely a lot of interest. That was really great for our kids who are interested in this. Um, and I'd love to be able to provide that to them. Looking at a lot of cool options in terms of how students can really get into the classroom, not that they're not already in a classroom, but into other classrooms, um to support teachers at all levels of our district, too. Got a lot of exciting opportunities and shout out to Sheri for really putting a lot of work forward.
Well, thank you both.
I'll just add, you know, my um excitement, too, coming in, this obviously came through academic tech, but um there are so many of our kiddos who, like, so many kids, like, you ask them, what do you want to be when you grow up? And they say, I want to be a teacher. And at some point, like, we lose that a little bit, you know? And so I love that there is an opportunity to capture that excitement about um being a teacher and giving some, you know, structure to that dream, that goal, that um that pathway. So it's just really exciting and I'm, and it's, there's flexibility involved in it, too, with the program at Wilson Talent Center, but also just students who are like, I don't know, I want to commit to that. But I want to be a teacher and here's a way for me to get some, you know, exposure and it's just a really great thing and I'm so grateful, um Sheri, that you're excited about teaching this class. I couldn't think of anyone better to do it. And I'm excited that our students will have that opportunity, I mean pending board action, but let me tell y'all, let me tell y'all now.
No fighting in the school.
Let's vote.
All of those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six-zero. The last uh motion, uh, can I get a motion for item C?
We'll keep going. Board of Edu- I move the Board of Education approve the revision of policy 5106, Transgender Students as Presented.
Any discussion? I can answer any questions on that. Just for the as Trusty Walton had mentioned earlier, a year ago, we implemented an entirely new policy manual. And we went through that and made, you know, edits as best we could, knowing that many, many policies would probably need future edits. And the transgender student policy was one of those. As the policy chair, um, we discussed it in policy. I took it to Kim Phillips Nope. I took it to Lois Parr, who's part of the Social Justice Leaders Collaborations. My sister-in-law, I can't even remember what she she does. I took it to another person who works at Salas Center. I took it to this, both this, uh, this, the Gay State Alliance, but I never heard back from them, and Students for Gender Equity. Took all of their feedback, edited the policy. We discussed it several more times at Policy Committee. And what we have uh now is the final result of that. That felt more connected to our particular school community. Any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, I'll just add my appreciation to you. No, because it, there was a lot of um work involved in, you know, having lots of different eyes on this policy. It's one of those things, it's always important that we get things right. But this was particularly a policy that it was important to get right and to um make sure that we you know, got um information from folks whose voices were important, are important. And so you taking the time to do that is appreciated and um I just want to say publicly to thank you for all of that work.
Alright. No further discussion? Uh, all in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, let's move on to committee reports. Do we have a report from Academic and Technology?
Because I'm not chair anymore, thank goodness. Thank you, Liz.
Uh, Facilities Committee?
Okay, we met this morning, actually, and I promised not to schedule another facilities meeting on the same day as a board meeting. In the future, rookie mistake. Okay, so um today we covered, we met Billy Hastings. He's our new director of um operating, uh, operations. Um, we discussed the outdoor learning centers and their drainage areas, the completion of the fencing at Donley, the auditorium lighting project, and the roofing project that's underway, um, as well as safe routes to schools updates. And our next meeting is going to be uh February 22nd at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Finance Committee meets
Wednesday.
Wednesday at
12:30.
12:30, exactly. Thank you. Intergovernmental Relations?
Uh, yes, so we have not met yet, but we have um, we have drafted a statement of purpose to set our structure and goals for the committee. The committee has begun attending inter-agency meetings of interest to the district. And the 2023-2024 Legislative Session officially began on January 11th with the swearing in of the newly elected House and Senate members. The Next East Lansing City Council Regular Meeting will be January 24th at 7:00 PM. And Governor Whitman will deliver her annual State of the State address on January 25th at 7:00 PM. The Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB, will host a Views from the Capitol webinar recap on January 26th at 12:00 PM. Any board members interested in attending should register online at MASB.org. The Next East Lansing Community Development Advisory Committee will be January 26th at 6:00 PM. The National School Boards Association, NSBA, will be holding its Equity Symposium in Person January 28th in Washington DC at the Marriott Marquis. Any board members interested in attending should register online at mynsba.org. The NSBA will also be holding its Annual Advocacy Institute in Person on January 29th through the 31st, also at Washington DC Marriott Marquis. So if you are interested in attending that um symposium, you can register at nsba.org. That's it for me.
Thank you. Did you say you had a meeting scheduled?
Not yet.
Okay. Personnel Committee?
Oh, me, we have not met, sorry, yes. But um, sorry, uh, we, new board members will need to attend some training, required training regarding superintendent evaluation. That training will be open to all board members, um, who, and particularly any who have not participated in that before. So anyway, information to come. We still have some time yet before we'll start to formalize that meeting.
And and there's some discussion that will be happening regarding which tool we will be using. And and I don't know if you ever got back to me, but if it's a new tool, we may all need be trained, correct?
A new tool? It is not the one we've been using. It's not a new tool, but it's not the one we've been using. I think there needs to be some uh discussion based on my understanding of some things I learned this weekend about the training that some folks have gone to versus the tool that that training was intended for. So some of you may be unknowingly already trained for the tool we haven't used yet. And so we will get that figured out.
Okay.
But the training, I put in an email yesterday, I feel like uh February 7th. I said, okay, I said it's, it's remote and so just maybe kind of bookmark your calendar for it just in case.
And so that is for the tool we are looking to use?
Correct, it's for MASB's tool, yes. That's what you all trained on last year, but it's not the one we use.
But we didn't do an evaluation, so it didn't matter. Okay. Right. But the rest of us do.
You might be okay, I don't know.
And Policy Committee meets on the, what did we decide, the 20?
23rd of February.
23rd at 10:00 AM. Announcements?
I have announcements. Alright, one of the things I thought would be uh interesting to the community and to the board is upcoming events at the various schools. So I'd like to mention that the McDonald Middle School, the eighth grade parents are forming a dance committee and they're meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in the media center. At Marble, they are holding the Marble Muskrat Mindful Movement Event, and that's on Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. That's going to be their big fundraiser. Um, they're also on the same day holding a Buddy's Pizza fundraiser. So if anybody wants pizza on Thursday, go and tell them that you're doing it in support of Marble. At Green Elementary, they are supporting Warm Hands, Warm Hearts, Warm Paws. And they are collecting donations for the Humane Society through the end of January. At Red Cedar, their family council is holding a sock and underwear drive. They're looking for sizes, um, socks? No, yes, yes. Underwear, 3T to adult small, and socks, child 6 to adult 8, all of February. Uh, they'd like us to know that their book fair was so successful that they're hosting another in April. And April 20th is steam night. They're partnering with local organizations and hopefully NHS and robotics at the high school to provide an evening of steam activities for the school. And this upcoming week, or this exact week, um, we have many sport events here at sporting events here at the high school. On Wednesday, we've got girls gymnastics versus Haslett at 6:30. On Thursday, we have um a boys' basketball triple header versus Oakmuss at 4:00, 5:30, and 7:00. That's freshman JV and varsity. Friday, the boys', uh, varsity hockey plays against Lumen Christie Catholic High School at 6:00. That's at suburban ice. And Saturday, they play again versus the Kalamazoo Eagles at 6:30, again at suburban ice. So there's a lot to do if we want to support, you know, what's going on around the school district. Oh, thank you. And Monica put this together, so I I am just reading this for her. Or you can read it. Okay, so these are the various school parent associations, community councils, I should say. So Donley is meeting, they meet the third Tuesday of every month. So February 21st is their next meeting at 7:00 PM. Glenn Karen's uh elementary community council is meeting February 7th at 6:30. Robert L. Green's community council is meeting the 7th at 6:00 PM. Marvel's is meeting on the 14th of February at 7:00 PM. Their equity team is also meeting on the 14th, but at 6:00 PM, so you could hit both meetings. Red Cedar Family Council is meeting on the 21st at 5:30. White Hills also meets on the 21st at 6:00. McDonald Middle School is meeting on the 24th at 6:30. That's the 24th of January, so that's tomorrow. So that's actually the same time as their dance meeting, their dance committee. And the 21st uh is East Lansing High School's Community Council, and they're at 6:00 PM here in the hub. So if anybody would like to support their school parent, those, you know, community association, I'm sorry, I'm used to saying parent council and I've got to get over that. Those are the dates.
Thank you. And thanks for putting that together, Monica. Trusty Fink, sorry. Anything else? Any other announcements, anything for the good of the whole?
I hope you'll, uh, maybe you've noticed in our first week of implementation, but we are um working to tell our story more as a district. And so we have kind of a rotating schedule of posting um uh information and just uh different kinds of events or shout-outs or um event, things going on at each of our schools and in some of our departments. So that just started last week and you notice like something different on our Facebook page each day to be representative of every building. Um, our, our tech department's helping us with that as all, as our principals and some of our department folks. And um, uh, also our, I noticed Kaylee was putting it on Twitter, too, which is cool. But mostly it's just a way to get, get our story out there and make sure we're representative and and sharing it from all of our buildings. So we have kind of a rotating schedule, every two weeks of posts from each building of things going on and a list of all the different things they could cover, so it's not all canines for change.
I mean, it would be okay if
Not all puppies, I know. I know it.
Well, I saw the post about um Robert L. Green this week. And I, I didn't realize that was part of a unified strategy, but I'm so glad to hear that that's information that will be shared because if you don't have a kiddo in that building, you don't necessarily hear, even as board members, like, we don't necessarily hear. So it's nice to have that connection. I appreciate the effort on top of all of the other things um that are going on to take that extra step.
Anything else? Call us adjourned at 10:13. Thank you.